This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Right, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for October 1st at 6:02 PM. And if we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. If you see the flag here and there.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great, thank you. So, for those of you who are not actually watching live, but you will catch this later on, we put a notice out on Facebook, we had a technical glitch with our microphones tonight, and we're not able to record downstairs live. Therefore, this is being recorded and it will be broadcast as soon as we get the link to share it with you, which I'm sure will be probably tomorrow. So, for those that normally tune in, hopefully you got the message on Facebook or somewhere. So, with that, just a few minutes for Citizen Speak. I think we have somebody first. Yeah, Robert, go ahead.
I'm Robert Florida, speaking for the Cemetery Commission. There's a live going on in the cemetery besides Berry with these things. We took down a 150-year-old tree that was live, but it was tilted at about a 30-degree angle, and its many branches are over historic headstones, 200 years old. And we felt it was prudent to take it down. People didn't like the looks of it. Took five men, about four hours, with five machines, to take it down. So, took it down without any incident. I will be giving a report in future Select Board meetings, but I just wanted to give a heads up about what we intend to do in the next week or two. The Tree Service Company is going to clear about a half an acre of land in the southwest corner of the cemetery. It's going to clear the brush, saplings, and any dead trees that are already on the ground. So, we can see the contours of the land and determine our expansion of the cemetery. So, in order to get a landscape arch to check in, in order to see what's feasible, we need that cleared. So, that's what will be going on probably in a week or two.
Okay.
And I'll give a full report.
Yeah, we'll get you scheduled for the 15th. I think we postponed your report, so we'll get you on for that meeting. Perfect, good.
Good, thank you.
Very good. All right. And before we jump into our presentations tonight, I do want to repeat one thing that we had announced. We had a very short Select Board meeting on the 17th of September. Couple of us were out of town, couple of us were under the weather, and we decided not to have a live meeting, so we did a short Zoom meeting for just one agenda item only. And that was to announce a major gift to the town. So, I'd like to repeat a share of that tonight. I won't read the entire thing, but basically, at the May 7th Annual Town Meeting, it was approved that we were authorized as a Select Board in the town to acquire certain property on College Highway, about 52 acres. And this is the parcel right across from Dowd Insurance Cumberland Farms area. It's been owned by the Labrie Brothers for a while now. And this was approved to be purchased by the town, and the asking price was $2.2 million. The purchase was continued upon the voters approving it at a formal election after the town meeting, because this would have had to been a proposition to and a half debt exclusion. So, we did a special election on June 25th to do that, and the voters did approve the debt exclusion question. So, therefore, we were authorized to borrow $2.2 million to fund this acquisition and its related costs. We'll get into the details a little bit more, but we did close on the property this past week, and Scott can go into details when we get on the subject line there. But, we had, in the meantime, over the last couple of months, we've been approached by a family in town who wanted to consider giving us a donation toward the acquisition of the land. So, just to be clear and not mess up any words here, in an effort to alleviate the financial impacts on the town and its taxpayers of this property acquisition, Richard R. Boyle, herein after the donor, has pledged to donate to the town a gift in the form of a mutual fund to be held by the town for the sole purpose of this property acquisition. Upon acceptance of the gift, the town agrees not to borrow more than $1.2 million for the purchase of the land on College Highway. So, basically, the gift amount from the donor in town is the Boyle family. They are a family that actually owned this property. Their parents owned it back into the 1940s. And so, this is kind of an interesting full circle. So, the Boyle family is how they would like to be noticed as the donors, and they have presented us with a gift of $1 million. So, the $2.2 million was indeed the purchase price, but that means that as a town, we only have to borrow 1.2. So, this is an incredibly generous gift, and we really thank publicly again, and we're working on a thank you note to the family for this generous donation, because this is pretty amazing. And this is really just for the land acquisition, but that gets us a good start on all the projects that we want to do, from the Public Safety Complex to the Senior Center, some affordable housing perhaps, and various other uses that are coming forward to us still. So, that'll be, anyway, a great generous contribution to the town. So, we want to thank them publicly. So, with that, I think we'll move into tonight's presentations. We have two. We have, every year, we try to get a hold of our Senator and our Rep., and so, we're very pleased that we managed to get them coordinated on the same night. So, how about Senator Ellis, if you'd like to start, and then we'll follow up with Rep. Pease? And I think whatever you'd like to do, so update on what's been going on on Capitol Hill. I know we had some things floating around in the Econ Development Bill, and that kind of fell by the wayside this year, I think. And, you know, just, you know, tell us what kind of has been happening, what the priorities are, and what you guys might be working on now?
Yes, certainly. Well, first and foremost, thank you very much. I think this is absolutely critical that we do this. You know, the communication between state partners and local partners is absolutely paramount. So, I just applaud you for doing this, because as someone who represents a fairly significant number of towns, this doesn't happen everywhere. So, I think it's a feather in your cap, if you will. I guess just because you mentioned it, the ECODEV, right? And I just kind of want to, I think this is important information for everyone. And I certainly don't fault anyone in this room. I blame the media wholly and entirely for what I'm about to say. There is this really significant, should I?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Very significant misperception out there that business stops on July 31st, nothing else can be done, and then all bets are off. And if you pay even a scintilla of attention, subsequent post-July 31st, I think five bills have been passed, signed by the Governor, and I have every reason to believe that the ECODEV bill, which, to your point already that you alluded to, which has some really good things for this community in it, will be passed. And I'm going to go out on a limb here and say I think it's going to be passed really, really soon. Talked to a couple of people, leave it at that, who are leading negotiations on our side in the Senate, and it's, we're getting really, really close.
That's great.
And I think that's just really, really important, because I think every year it comes up, and every year the media crucifies us, and I get it. But, July 31st is the end of formal session, right? And there's a lot of informal things that happen. For example, I am, I am a conferee, right? So, by way of background, House passes a bill, Senate passes a bill, and if there's differences in those two bills, it goes to something called a Conference Committee. We passed a, both the House and the Senate passed a really substantial substance use disorder bill. And I am the Chair of Mental Health Substance and Recovery, so I am one of the Senate negotiators on our side. So, I've been actively going back and forth, again, with my friends in the House to try to get a compromise, and I fully anticipate that bill will be done. So, again, just kind of, just laying the foundation of this July 30, hopefully putting to bed this July 31 myth that is so pervasive, and I get it, right? And, you know, prior to being a member myself, I was like, wow, July 31st, got to be done or it's done. And I would just go on and on, like, you know, the ECODEV bill, a climate bill. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. But what finished on July 31st, I guess August 1st, because we were up all night, we were reading, there was quote unquote 12 bills left on the table. There's only five left. So, you know, seven of those have since been passed. I just think that's important, important to know.
Yeah.
So, that's in a nutshell. So, my time right now is really being consumed by, look, the ECODEV bill, the priorities that myself, and I'm certainly going to venture to say that the Rep. care about in the ECODEV bill, certainly for the communities we share and then beyond, survived that final prod, meaning they survived the Conference Committee, some gets the Governor, we can start getting that, those funds back here, whether it's in the form of a bond or real dollars, if you will. So, that process is happening, and of course, stuff like this is going on there. I guess a couple of things, right? And I think I touched this last time. And I just, I can't stress this enough for this group and beyond, how critical this topic is right now, how consuming it is financially for the Commonwealth right now. And I'm going to kind of just go back, and I know many of what I'm about, much of what I'm about to say is everyone in this room is well aware of. But I always, I always tell people, I'm going to treat everyone I talk to based on the amount of information I knew prior to becoming an elected official, which wasn't much. So, if you already know this, I apologize. And anytime I go into a classroom, I always say, hey, do you know the main difference between the federal government and the state government in terms of? And they all kind of look at me and they say, there's the federal government and the state government. I say, yeah, besides that. And I always give this analogy, right? It's like, when the federal government goes into the grocery store, they can use a credit card. When we go into the grocery store, we have to use a debit card. And of course, what I mean by that is that we can't run debts, we can't do all of those things. We can only spend what we have. And why I bring that up, why I think it's really, really important right now, is that for the past, oh, for the past, you know, two to three years, but really, this has been much more pronounced this past calendar year, we've got this new kind of unprecedented financial burden in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Obviously, I'm referring to the emergency assistance stuff, i.e. the housing stuff, i.e. the immigration stuff, i.e. however you want to respond to it, that's really having an impact. And again, the reason it's having an impact is, well, a couple of things are at play here. And I'm going to say what I'm about to say with absolutely no reservation whatsoever. The first reason is that our friends in Washington DC are categorically, without a doubt, unquestionably useless. They can't do anything. And what happens with that dysfunction, and this is going to be in my prediction, the next, this is going to define the next two to three years of government in this nation right now, and I hope I'm wrong, is that, you know, issues that historically have been the province of the federal government, i.e. immigration, so many other issues, are increasingly having to be dealt with by states, because the federal government, for any number of reasons, won't do that. And just to be very clear, taking the immigration issue, going way back to 1870, the United States Supreme Court weighed in with this case called the Freeman case. What they said is that, without question, immigration is an issue for the federal government, for obvious reasons, right? If you had 50 different states, just a hodgepodge of different policies, it wouldn't make any sense. The Fed should do this. What happens when the federal government doesn't do their job? And we have this really unprecedented influx of folks that are coming to Massachusetts for whatever reasons. And I'm not looking to get into an immigration conversation. I'm just looking at this from a sheer bottom-line standpoint in Massachusetts. And what this means for us, because we have to balance our budgets, is that at some point in time, something's got to give. So, all of these programs, as far as I'm concerned, you literally could go down the list, it runs the entire gamut, from roads, to schools, to homeless beds, to treatment beds for the opiate crisis and addiction crisis, all of that is vulnerable if you have to spend, which we are spending right now, a billion dollars a year on this. I want to repeat that, a billion dollars a year on this issue. So, overarching all of this, and all of these discussions right now, just from the time period that I've been in, if you look at the continuum from when I was a first Rep. and now a Senator, you know, there used to be a day and age where you could sit down with your Chair of Ways and Means and say, I want the following project, Southampton, Westfield, and unless you were just, any number of reasons, but typically, the answer was, okay, you know, let's talk about that, we can make that work. The answer now we're getting increasingly is, well, justify this. Tell us why this is a good use of taxpayer dollars, because those, you know, much tighter purse strings get used at this time. And I wanted to, and why am I bringing this up at Town Council tonight right now in Southampton? Well, because it's relevant to every town and city that I represent, right? The more we spend on this, the less we can spend on other things. And that's just something for us to keep in mind. I've got, I've got any number of thoughts on that, where we could go with this, but I think it's less important than just kind of putting that flagpole in the ground to say, this is where we're at right now. And this is just something to be mindful of as we have these dialogues about revenue and stuff of that nature. That being said, you know, I think the Commonwealth, all things considered, is in a pretty good fiscal situation. We've got a very strong rainy day fund. We are commended for that all of the time, which of course, in my mindset, is that really supposed to be there for, you know, things we want. We have a rainy day, things get really, really, really bad. But the way we maintain it, certainly one of the best in the country. And then, look, I guess I'll just quickly transition a little bit to, and then I'll obviously yield the floor to my friend here right now. It's, so, really, the word, the phrase that gets talked the most about right now in Massachusetts, and I have this conversation all the time with the Governor and the previous Governor, Governor Baker, is like, we need to ensure that Massachusetts is competitive, right? Like, we can't, we can't, gone are the days, and I think COVID showed us a lot with this, like, gone are the days where we can rely on having the best institutions of higher learning, some of the most high-speed country companies that are out there leading on things like AI and all these things, and think that just because they're located there, people are going to come here, even if it's just really, really hard to find housing, right? Housing, housing, housing. All of these issues are tied together. Housing, the workforce shortages, all these things that are out there, all contribute to one thing, I think absolutely, which is that Massachusetts is going to be less competitive with other states. And there are a lot of states, and I'm thinking Tennessee, North Carolina, Georgia, that are basically saying, hey, Massachusetts, you might have great colleges and universities, but ours aren't too shabby anymore either. And oh, by the way, you can get this beautiful luxury condominium for half the price. Come on down here. And you want to know what? A lot of those companies that you work for where you're from, you can work remote from. Because that's one of the things that COVID taught us. A lot of people can work overhead and save some of that overhead. So, I view everything we do right now, I kind of ask myself a question. Does this make Massachusetts more or less competitive? Now, the good news is, we just passed a monumental housing bond bill, really, really important, $5.4 billion bond bill, which is a start, right? This is going to scratch the surface, maybe go a little bit below the surface, but a housing bond bill that is going to speak directly to that competitive, competitive level here in Massachusetts. We could spend hours talking about the housing crisis here in Massachusetts, but in many ways, refined to its barest essence, I would argue, that it's like that. I think I took one economics course in undergrad, and then the rest just comes from reading media sources, right? In many respects, you have a basic supply-demand issue, right? Demand far exceeds supply in housing. Costs are skyrocketing. Now, I'm not laboring at any misperceptions that there's any, there's not any more causes of skyrocketing housing, but it's certainly lack of housing stock is a big part of that. And it's housing stock all throughout the state of Massachusetts. So, one of the things that this bill does is build, build, build. Now, we get to the hard part. I deal with all the time with my friends in local government, and I'm going to exclude my friends in my present company right now. The biggest challenge that we have with housing in Massachusetts is our friends in local government at the local level. And a big part of that is nimbyism, right? And it's, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. And I, again, not look, and I already said, I'm not saying anyone in this room is guilty of that. But what I am saying is that I am fond of going to an event in front of a lot of people and saying, who thinks we have a housing crisis? They all raised their hand. Everybody knows that. It's like, it's getting to be like, in vogue to say, yes, we have a housing crisis. All right, well, who's willing to do something about it if you mean, it means you're going to build this many units in this amount of time? Nobody looks at me like crazy. But we don't want to do that. We want it built elsewhere. And what I'm here to tell you is that if, if, if everyone says, build elsewhere, then we don't build anywhere. And then we still find ourselves in this housing crisis. I want to be very clear here. It's not, we don't just need more affordable housing, we need more market rate housing, we need more workforce housing, we need all of the above, because I'm absolutely convinced that when you build one, it helps relieve some of the pressure with some of the aerials. I think that's common sense. Not everyone agrees with that, but I tend to agree with that. And look, here's the other part. When someone comes forward and says, look, I want to build, I'm going to build. I think for too long in Massachusetts, a builder, a developer would come along and say, hey, I'm willing to do this. And then we look at them and say, okay, well, you have to do the following things. You have to do this to pay, it has to be this many units. And they're looking at it, and they're looking at it, and they're saying, what do I want? I'm not going to make literally a dollar on this. You know what they do? They say, see ya, I'm gone. So, another thing we have to do, and I think this bill exemplifies that, is we have to say, you want to know what? If you are a builder, if you are a developer, and you're going to make money on this, kudos, good for you. You're building housing. If you make money on that, good. You know, it's a cost-benefit thing. Last thing I'll say, and I'll turn it over to my good friend. The extent, I guess, of that nimbyism, it's really playing out for us in the eastern part of the state right now, right? If you look at kind of the, I forget what we call the bill, the MBTA Communities Act, whatever it is, you know, literally, like, if you're within a certain proximity to the TEE, which is saying, I'm oversimplifying this, it's like, we're not telling you have to build, we're telling you, you have to come up with a plan to build housing. And so, for the longest time, Massachusetts, you know, the whole carrot sticks thing, we've said, if you do this, we'll give you the following things. And communities are still, many communities are saying, no, we're not interested. Well, we just passed a law that said, if you're within this amount of space to a TEE, you have to come up with this plan. Now, we're good. Which is like openly defying law. So, it's like, okay, so now what we're going to do is we're going to implement the stick. And what we're going to say is, hey, this grant that you apply for, if you don't follow the law, you're not going to be eligible for this fund. They're going to withhold it. And what's remarkable is that there's still communities willing to forego that money not to comply with the law. And this is the last thing I say and promise. If we start to live in a, in a system of government where, you know, either individuals or communities or anyone can kind of pick and choose the laws that they want to follow, we're going at a really bad play. Because I've seen some of those places, as has my colleague in government here, oversees what that looks like, and it's not good. I'm going to stop talking for right now, and obviously, I'm hopeful that we can have a dialogue that might lead to more questions, but I just wanted to touch on a couple of things.
Good.
Pleasure, my dear.
Thanks, Senator. Yes, Rep. Pease, please, go ahead.
It's amazing, right? I really love serving with the Senator, because he makes a great team, and we work together well on a lot of different initiatives. But, obviously, one big thing, there was an increase in the regional school transportation, right? I know that's always a hot topic, but it's never, it's never 100%. We have a lot of colleagues on both sides of the aisle that are from rural communities and regional schools that continue to fight and push that up every year. So, we did get a bump in that, but obviously, it's not necessarily what we wanted as a caucus down there, as we work together. But we continue to fight that. And obviously, another good thing that the Senator referred to is the financial health of, you know, the Commonwealth with the current crisis being costing about $1 billion. But prior to that, ever since I've been in office, it's been very fortunate that we've had, during COVID, it was a lot of money, right? And I'll give credit to the leadership down there. They've done a really good job of building up that rainy day fund. I mean, it's the highest it's ever been. As a matter of fact, we just passed a thing that allows us to take the interest from that rainy day fund and use it to offset matching funds for federal money. So, that'll just make us more competitive in this Commonwealth to get those federal dollars. So, that's a beautiful thing. And then, on the other side of the coin, I mean, we got to watch, continue to watch the Student Opportunity Act, you know, with the millionaire tax that's supposed to be going towards roads and schools. Now, a lot of that money for roads did kind of go towards the MBTA, which we need to get that focused, not just down in the Boston region, you know, we need to get that out here, which again, they have not increased Chapter 90 money in over 15 years. So, I keep trying to fight that. I mean, they do have the grants that have been put in place since I've been in there of about $150 million, the buckets. And again, but that's, that's not necessarily, it doesn't, it's not as conducive, especially for smaller towns, who definitely don't have the grant writers available to do these things like a larger city would. So, I wish they would have been more into just the Chapter 90, divide up the formula, which they've said, they've told me when I talked to the Chairman of Transportation, they're supposed to be reworking that formula too, to see how that, make sure it is fair and equitable across the border out west as well as for the east. But that chairman is now retiring, so I'll have to see who gets appointed as the new Chair of Transportation on the House side, so we can continue to have those discussions down there. Because that's always a big issue, as I always tell people. I mean, it's, it's all about schools and roads, right? I mean, the school's your biggest budget item, and it's the thing that drives your property taxes, you know? And roads are the biggest thing we complain about. So, if the state would prioritize those, that would be a lot better. So, that's what we try to do. And again, the ECODEV, I've been told on the House side that that will get done. So, we're optimistic, but it's not on a calendar. It's not there yet. So, but I've been told by, that, from people who have talked to the Chair of Ways and Means, that it's getting very close, like the Senator said, and they expect it to be done here soon, which, and then hopefully, the $150 million that we have in that bonding bill towards your safety complex will, will still be a part of that. Because again, when it goes to Conference Committee, there's no guarantee. I did get it passed on the House side, but again, it's got to get to the Conference Committee and get over to the Governor. So, those-
It's $150,000, right?
Yeah, did I say million?
Yeah.
Oh, you're like, oh, we're going to build a whole G complex, and your housing crisis is solved.
$150,000.
Thank you for clarifying, $150,000.
There we go, thank you.
My notes. We're coming back to that.
Thank you, good catch on that. So, hopefully, that is going to be the case. I just also reached out, I was talking to our guy in the Governor's Office, who's going to, who hasn't had an answer on the liquor license about pushing that through.
Good.
You know, they got the letter, and I said, where are we at with it? What's going on? And I see the Senator on it as well. And they said, they're still discussing how to go forward. They don't like to do this process very often, but hopefully, we can nudge them to get it done this year, you know? So, we're still have, I'm looking at that, and I think-
Yeah, that's for the food market.
Yep, the food market, yep. So, if there's, you know, the questions about any other particular issues that I'd be more than happy to address, but those are the things I focus on for the town of Southampton. And every time it's budget season, we try to get something in. I mean, you know, as I said, with the crisis right now, it gets a little tighter, but we did get $25,000 towards the hybrid cruiser, so a little bit, it's better than nothing. And we'll keep going forward to try to get a little bit. I, well, I'm not going to say. But, but anyway, so unless you have any questions, that's kind of what we're doing down there. And I think the Senator had a good roll-up, and we got to obviously do something about, which they did. They made some moves on at the end of session. Oh, and I do want to clarify, we don't end session every year on July 31st. It's only election year. Next year, we'll be going up to Thanksgiving before we close out session. So, we don't, like, always get an early break.
Good point.
But like the Senator said, we continue to do stuff after that if we need to. And I expect that we will get called back in to do the ECODEV bill, because we'll have to.
That's, that's great. No, and I think-
If we're in break, someone like neglected, you got to let me know about that, because it'd be, it'd be interesting to find that out, if we're in break. Like, it's just, again, it's the misnomer, like, it's-
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, I just want to, you know, on behalf of the Select Board and stuff, and I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to the earmarks that you've both been able to provide for us. for us, those have come through, and it may, I may say, it probably has taken us more time to track down the paperwork to make them actually appear in the account, but we got them, so Scott's been diligent about doing that, so we appreciate the, the past work on that. So we'll look forward to hearing any news about the Econ Development Bill. I, I wasn't aware that, that it was probably coming forward. I knew that it had a possibility to, but I didn't realize that things had been picked back up again, so that's good to hear. I think one thing, I'm, I'm also chairing the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee here in town, and both of you have been very supportive. When I've reached out, needed letters of support for various grant applications, so thank you for that. One of the things I've been tuning into, there's a fairly frequent webinar that's done by the, some new office at the Governor's level, the Federal, hmm, Federal Funds Infrastructure Office, FFIO, I think. And so, been tuning into a lot of that. A lot of the federal funds that are out there don't really apply to a little town like Southampton. So we're still looking honestly for a lot of construction money. It's that brick and mortar money for public safety, for senior center, and finding construction funds is really, really tough to identify the appropriate grant for. And I know we've got the one-stop grant, we've tried that a couple of times. We're farther along in our, our design process for both, both facilities now, so I think, you know, we'll certainly put in for it in, in January when it comes up again. But, you know, we've, we've been probably at a disadvantage, because we, we were talking theoretically in the past grant applications, and now we can be a little bit more concrete. But just to say, you know, if you guys hear of anything that's related to that, you know, that would help us move forward, in particular on those kinds of projects, we'd be very appreciative on that.
Could I underscore that?
Sure.
Package it up and put it in a catapult and launch it to the other end of the table? In prior years, certainly, you've heard about public safety building as a critical longstanding need, and, and that remains.
And that's been some of our earmarking.
In isolation. And you may have heard more recently about an effort to build a new senior center as a standalone initiative. With purchases, 50-some-odd acres of land, those will be co-located on this land where we really have the opportunity, blank slate, no prior development, former agricultural land, front on Route 10 and on the Greenway bike path to be built, to be completed into It's a blank slate, and there is initiative from our Housing Authority and our Community Preservation Act Committee to do something meaningful for affordable housing. And we're trying to put a shape to that. In order to do that, we're reaching out to private nonprofit developers to make sure we don't ask for something that isn't what the market is prepared to build. That if we go with a coherent plan for a new community, some town center, public safety, senior center, housing, recreational components, regional transit, that hopefully will appeal for particularly federal dollars. And we're gonna need either a connection to the East Hampton Sewer or sophisticated onsite, advanced and innovative, they call it under Title V. And we're gonna need the whole team. We're gonna need your support. I won't belabor it now, but it is major capital investment specifically to that brighter economic future for everyone. Southampton, on paper, well, it is a small community, on paper, it looks affluent, but many, what, 30% of the town residents are housing stressed here. And it's barely, it did grow, but it's not growing very fast right now. We need more opportunities for housing, so join the team. We're about to hire professional help, as we're gonna need that. We've brought in Pioneer Valley Planning Council and Mass Housing Partnership, but we need everybody on the team. It goes right to the heart of what you're saying. And designing it right from the get-go, we understand, people fear what they don't understand, or what they haven't had a chance to participate in. We want everyone to have a chance to participate in designing the future of the town.
Yeah. And are you, are you referring that, I know, you're moving forward with the Public Safety Complex, and you're moving forward with the Senior Center.
Correct.
Are you saying that at this point in time, you'd also like to try to add in the housing? Is that what you... Because I know that, I know that it came up at the town meeting when I sat in on it, that when you got the plans, that, that you were talking, and that the future, it could be a good place to do affordable housing. But you're talking about trying to incorporate it as a, as a, like, a whole development plan.
It's a jigsaw puzzle of 50-odd acres. And there's public safety, the senior center, the housing, conservation, recreation pieces, and perhaps others that we haven't identified.
So I would agree, public safety and council and aging are go. Everything else needs to be vetted, discussed, and get there. I wouldn't naturally jump right to housing.
So...
Unless I missed a big meeting, that 15-minute session we had.
I, I was inviting everybody to join the planning process.
I know, I hear what you're saying, and I kind of got that from the town meeting, that that's the future where you want to go to.
Yeah, I'm sure they got...
And what's happening basically is that the next step for us will be to hire a land use planner, and part of that is gonna be a, a whole system of community engagement and meetings, talking to the various...
Right, but it's not the intent that, going down that road is not going to slow down public safety, council, and aging. Those two projects are moving forward.
They're the priorities, right?
No.
They're the priority, and then, but we want to weave that in and keep that in the forethought of the future plan.
Correct, yeah.
And then, then the East Hampton Sewer...
They have capacity, if we can get the flow going the right way. And they even pick up a portion of the town, which then eliminates septic, which...
Are they at all, are they up there by the Y, are they anywhere?
They come right up to Coleman Road right now.
Oh, okay.
Perfect alignment if we can raise capital to do it.
If we can get the railroad to let us put the utilities underneath the... Right away, they didn't give us, they gave us the upper, but we can't dig.
So we're, we're actually undergoing a sewer feasibility study.
They only have a refer to it right now.
Okay.
There's a sewer feasibility study underway right now, so we'll see how that pans out.
And again, most times when we have things come up, and I'm, and I reach out, I'm sure Senator's Office probably does, I mean, he's got a lot more communities, but I usually try to reach out, and I, I usually do reach out to, to Scott, Chris is the Chair, and to say, hey, are there any needs that I might be able to get a little bit something for the...
Yeah, we can definitely feed your needs, and if the state budget is constrained...
Sometimes I'm not gonna be a big, big chunk sometimes, because we want to try to get it going.
If the state budget is constrained, we have to be yet more competitive for federal funds. The Infrastructure Act has the right mix of things. Housing has funding both federal and state. Another major piece is left on the chopping board, cutting room floor.
I think at the, at the end of the, first of all, anytime that I've reached out to either one of your guys or your staff, everyone's been supportive and helpful, so thank you for that. But the, I think the, I mean, yeah, I'm in favor of solving the housing problem, and you can build it here in town, that's all right. We can continue to give away the agricultural land, I can be able to grow the food, so there's a, make sure, there's a piece there. But let me get my words, and you had yours. Our system of government and how it's set up here in town, our property taxes pay just what we need to survive, with a little bit of extra, right? So infrastructure with the 100-year-old police department, the 150-year-old fire department, the 76-year-old school, that only has capacity for 18 more students. So if we add housing, right, we're gonna add stress, unless we do 55, no, with no children, but that's not gonna necessarily solve the issue, is, we need, we need, you know, I don't know if I dropped where it went, but when the auditor Goldberg put that study out for the rural communities, yeah, we're the 20% out here, and I know, the minority. Everything, the MBTA, that you talked about, then giving that millionaire's tax is all out there, that's great, but proportionately, what do we get on our side of the state? I mean, and I'm fine with the funds being proportionate to population, but where's the extra money to help us with our one-time infrastructure needs every 50 to 60 years? And I know you guys don't have the solution, it's the leadership up above you, but that's our strength.
But John, following up on that, you know, with Senator, I'm sorry, the State Auditor Bump's report a couple of years ago now about the, the status of infrastructure and small towns like Southampton needing the public safety complexes and senior centers and various other things, that all sounded like it was gonna turn into something. And I know there's a bill that has been circulating somewhere, I guess it's probably at the House level, I'm not sure, over the last couple of years, to, to really focus on setting up a special fund to build infrastructure for small towns.
For rural communities. And, and, I mean, the Governor, when she came in, she appointed the rural...
Right, Ann Goby.
So I guess, I mean, I'm not sure, I haven't talked, I need to probably reach out to and see which, where's the path and what's going, what's happening down that end.
Because I think that bill just kind of spins, and it doesn't, doesn't seem to go anywhere, and I don't know what the hold is.
Probably needs a funding mechanism.
Yeah, so a couple things, like, and I get it, right? It's something, it's not, it's not, it's not novel, the Western Mass, Eastern Mass thing. And there, look, I, I would say there's been, I mean, you look at the, you know, one of the things that I do like about this past budget, there was, there was definitely more, you know, regional parity, right? I said more, not, not, not absolute parity, right? And I'm looking at the $110 million investment in RTAs, right? Like, that's a, that's a big Western Mass thing, that was, that's unprecedented amounts right there, so perfect, no, absolutely not. The MBTA still sucks up much of that, but, you know, when we, when we left, when I left, you know, the meeting with the Chair of Ways and Means, the Senate President, and we talked about, you know, the $110 million for the RTAs, big deal, but I think a larger issue. We've talked about this before, and it's something that's already been alluded to. And speaking of former Senator Goby, Commissioner of Rural, a job right now, I had a meeting with her yesterday, different communities, Russell, Montgomery, and it was the Gateway School System, right? And, and the whole point of the meeting was, they had been eligible for this funding stream, and they became ineligible because they could no longer meet the requirement to have as many students as they needed to participate in these programs. And the details are less important than the meeting that we had, where the superintendent looked at us and said, there's absolutely no way that these communities with these numbers, this is Boston projecting something on other parts of the state. Enter Ann Goby, and that's why I think, you know, again, a start, like, the recognition that, hey, and, and look, you can look at, you know, Ann's title is the Rural Communities, whatever, but I interpret it, and we've had this dialogue, like, she's like the smaller communities person. So if folks haven't had a meeting with her, and we can absolutely help close that, I mean, former colleague, well, I know she thinks she was not, no, she was in the Senate at that point in time.
She served on some committees with her.
Yeah, she's great, right? And she would be more than willing. So yesterday, I mean, we had this meeting, it was a Desi issue, and Desi had already gotten a call from Ann by like an hour after the meeting. So just, we have a voice now that, knowing where Ann's from, literally lives in the community, she gets this perspective. So there's a person with a seat at the table, so really critical. So I think a main do-out is meeting with Ann Goby for all of us, to flag some of this stuff.
Sure, no, I've, I've met with her a couple of times just personally, we run into each other on different, different scenarios altogether, but she had said that she'd be willing to come to a Select Board meeting at some point in time.
I was gonna say, it'd be great to be in it like this.
We better get her on the agenda, I think, at some point. Why don't we, we had something to really concrete ask her, that we can push her on. I think we're getting there now.
And then look, we've, like, and I'm looking at this, right? So I just think these things matter too, right? So I think every little bit helps, and I'm looking at the, you know, the EOP screen, right? That was recently, I mean, again, is it through-the-roof money, you know, about $18,744? You know, there's, there's a lot of quiet lobbying that goes on behind the scenes that we both do on behalf of that. And again, is it, is it the multiple million dollars that the community keeps? Absolutely not, but it's a little by little. And then we talked about the, another earmark too, like, and I think, I do this all the time, and I think it's really, really important. I'm so happy, like, the Southampton Youth Athletics, that earmarker, I think that's really, really important. I think it's really, really important that kids have a place that they can go to and feel happy and feel, because I, again, we could spend hours and hours talking about, like, when kids feel happy and they're, have a place to go and feel happy about, and go play sports and look around, and it's kind of, that matters. That matters to their well-being, and that matters to the community.
Going out in this park, right? You see all the parents and grandparents cheering their kids on it, it's a fantastic thing to watch.
And I, I'll be honest with you, like, this is stuff that before I would just do and just go, yeah, sure, that sounds good, but now that I have like a two-and-a-half year old, I'm like, oh, this stuff really matters. I can relate to it right now, I can do something.
And I just want to interject a second, because you mentioned the EOP screen, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief Hillingsworth, it's here, that's a grant that he applied for and just received for $18,000 some dollars for traffic safety. So congratulations for pulling that off as well.
Thank you for your support.
100%, anytime.
And look, so the only, sorry, let me just, because the bond, the bond, right? I think we, and then we got the, and then I feel like I put in for a million on the public safety, right?
Uh, I think it was, actually, yes.
You said you got it down here somewhere.
I feel like I put a million in for the public safety. Yeah, so a million dollars for the ECODEV bond bill. So, so that's gonna pass, and that's gonna be in there, right? So, so, so then the funding ends. Then it's text messaging or calling the big Governor and saying, Governor, you need to fund this. This is really, really important.
And that's, and that's the difference between a budget item as opposed to a bond bill, right? The Governor has to submit it to the Legislature after it's already approved, before it gets funded.
Yeah, Scott, so there's, we have this, this capital project at the end where the Governor just goes through and says, yep, 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 yep. And this is where I, this is where I am a really big believer that relationships matter, right? So it's, it's, Governor, let's, there's a lot of things that are going on in conversations on any number of issues, so I've got, I've got my, we as an off, we as a colleague, we as an office have our eye on that. Because we, look, I've been, and the Chiefs, you have phenomenal Chief here, right? Police, fire, but you need new buildings, like, I, I don't, and I see this, and I hope this never happens, but it's, you know, bad things happen when folks in public safety are not taken care of. And, and it's a damn shame, pardon my French, if it's because, you know, we knew there was an issue and we didn't do anything about it. So I think we're all on board with getting that, and I think it's, you know, from my perspective, I think seeing it is a big one too, so we get this bond money, and we'll continue, we're gonna do that.
No, that's great.
That, that's gonna be money we actually target.
Sure, well, and we're, and we're still looking at a variety of options for grants as well. So the more that we hear about them, we're, you know, tuned into regular things at the state level, but also some federal ones. We'd applied last year, just for your information, we'd applied last year for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which is a federal grant, with the intent of trying to get a new tanker, pumper, pumper tanker. And it's, they've been awarding grants out since about mid-July, and they stopped last week, and we didn't get it. And we were looking for about $600,000 for it, but it didn't happen, so. But they opened up again in October, November, November, I think they opened up, so we will apply again next year.
And what dialogue have you had with the federal delegation on that?
I had sent in letters of request for support for both Senator Warren and Senator Markey and Congressman Neal, which happened to go along with the application. But that's about as far as it went.
When we, when that, when that opens up again, ping us again, and please let me know when anything comes in, because I think it's...
I think it's the end, end of October might be, actually, so it's coming up soon.
As in, this month?
Soon, yeah. They open up, I don't think the application is due until the spring, you know, like February, March, but I think it actually opens up for expressions of interest early on.
Yeah, make, make sure you ping us again, because I definitely want to ping your Congressmen separate from a letter of support.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, good. Does anybody have any questions? We have another agenda to get to, but you guys have got business schedules as well, you've got business schedules as well, so we didn't want to keep you too late tonight, but...
Quick question?
Sure, yeah.
CPA has often benefited from a little something in supplemental budget.
Wait, Scott, can you say the first part again?
The Community Preservation Act. CPA, state match, you know, with receipts from the registry declining, the state has sometimes in a supplemental budget in the fall, because you guys are still lurking on, thank you, seen fit to add some money to the state match for CPA. That can make a real difference, as we're drawing actively on CPA. We're using our open space allocation fully. We have designs on historic preservation and not enough money, and thankfully, we've And thankfully, we've got a nest egg towards housing, should that be part of the plan, the final plan. So, uh, this is all good, but a little extra for CPA is huge. And related to that, um, without diving off a cliff, um, help me send you with the name of the program. There is a state tax incentive for donations of conservation restrictions in addition to your federal tax deductions.
I don't know the name of the program, but it is, it's been sort of clogged up in the legislature in terms of people lying.
The funding has been capped for what was a new program. It's no longer a new program. It's in high demand.
Was this a state credit for conservation land, is that?
Yeah, for donations.
For donations. Donations of land for conservation restriction purposes.
Would people donate?
So even less than fee donations of a conservation restriction are eligible for, I think it's a tax income credit.
At the beginning of your comments?
Federal tax deductions are another issue. I'm talking about a state.
State level.
Tax credit that is refundable. So even if you don't have a hundred thousand dollars worth of state tax liability, you can get a benefit from this program. And it's oversubscribed by private landowners who would like to see their land conserved, but they need something back and where you afford the transaction cost. Literally, it does that a little bit more, and that's it. It's not market rate. But it's been a huge incentive.
We had a couple of town, people in town, I think, that have taken advantage of that.
Well, absolutely.
The Hendricks family, I believe.
It's the Commonwealth Conservation Land Tax Credit, CLTC.
CLTC?
Yeah, and it's through the Energy and Environmental Affairs Office. And there's a whole formula for the way you can.
It's, yeah, it's been capped a absurdly low number.
So that that's the gist of what you're saying, like, getting rid of that cap or raising that?
Raising the cap.
And also getting it through, because it's sometimes people are waiting years.
Well, that, so that, not not to cut you off, but that's, like, if there's any message that I can convey tonight, and I I need to know more about this liquor license thing, um, like, soon, so I can probably, um, yeah, definitely. So make sure, please, um, we can really expedite things. So like, I can't get it to me. Like, if you know of a resident in town who's applied for this, and it's, what the heck, this is taking too long, like, that is, that's what I consider to be the low hanging fruit, things that you can do. It would be a travesty if there was a resident of this community who had something, was getting tied up in the state red tape, and we didn't get reached out to. Like, I always tell them, we can't, can't guarantee you're gonna get it. We can't guarantee, but what I will guarantee is this, we will get it faster than the process as it exists. Is that a good thing? Probably not. But if you want to know what, it's people I represent, so I'm gonna do it.
Sure.
We'll work with you and get you some real life examples, so we can.
Get me the real life people and tell me where it stands, and we'll pick up the phone.
It really happens.
That's our job.
It's 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 legal staffing at EO EEA that's insured supply. And then it's this artificial cap.
So we have specific, it's like anybody with, you know, they they're having trouble getting on the public or driver's license. We call up, it just gonna happen, you know? So if you have something, they actually pride.
And thank you for helping with our chapter ninety-one license. I mean, who knew?
And look, a lot of times, you just said understaffed. I mean, this this isn't, this isn't even a matter of, we can put this person to the top and push someone aside. That's not what I'm saying here. What I am saying is that there could literally be someone who just hasn't even had eyes on this application yet. We can bring the eyes to it.
Sure. That's great.
Yep.
No, we much appreciate that. So thank you for coming and spending your time tonight. Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for bringing it.
You'll be hearing from us, too. Yeah, thank you.
And please, if you send something to one of us, send it to both, because both things will go through both places. As I said, so at least if he's gonna take the lead, then I know when it comes there, that we need to make sure.
And we always like to say, as we're fighting with our friends in the House and vice versa, keep in mind, something to be law, it's gotta go through the House, the Senate, and the government. It's gotta go through both chambers.
That's right. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Much appreciate it. We'll be in touch. Good. Thanks.
I gotta read all of these warrants, we better speed up.
I know. We got lots to do here. We got lots to talk about before that. Good. All right. Well, thanks. That took about the time that I figured it would, but we only do it once a year. So I think it was good to have them come. I think it's really nice to have a, you know, face to face and get a get a sense of what's going on from their for their perspective and let them know a little bit about some of Southampton's priorities. So, all right.
Motion to approve Frances Tishman reappointment by law review advisory committee term to expire June thirty of twenty twenty-five.
Second, all right. All right. And just a point of discussion, Frances, who'd been on the bylaw committee, had decided originally not to renew, but she's willing to go on at least until the till the end of the fiscal year. So, uh, motion and the second is on the table. Could I have an approval, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Motion to regretfully accept the resignation of Donna Whitley from the Finance Committee effective immediately September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second by Dan. Okay. Yes, unfortunately, Donna has decided to step down, and we just want to thank her for all of her work. She's come on and off the Finance Committee more than once. She's had her arm twisted several times to come back on and and do do that important work. So we'll be looking for a replacement. But much appreciate Donna's time and effort supporting the town. So with a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, Scott, Town Administrator Report.
Uh, so the big news was last Thursday, we took ownership of Zero College Highway. And today.
Where's that, Scott?
You have stuff remaining.
We have to get a better name.
One seventeen. Yeah, we gotta, yeah, whatever.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
So we actually have the need in place and everything's set. Yep.
And then the other good news is today, we received the funds from the Boyle family. Um, they were sold, we don't have an exact amount till tomorrow, uh, when they when they officially post. Uh, but I also want to thank Tim Flynn of Flynn Financial, who was vital in doing that, because I have no idea about mutual funds. But more importantly, he actually paid for all the fees and did it for zero commission. So everything that Mr. Boyle, the Boyle family donated is gonna be a hundred percent to the town of Southampton.
And I think, just just clarify, too, depending on how that transfer, the timing of it, if it ends up being a bit more than a million, that's okay?
Supposedly, it's gonna be more.
Yep. So and if it had been less, or if it should be less, the the Boyle family had said that they would make up the difference to get to at least the million. But we're believing that with the markets and how things have been going, this would have transacted on a even better better rate. So we might be a bit more than a million, which is pretty impressive. So, go ahead, Scott.
The other big thing is that we hopefully will get our PVPC quote in for a land use planner. The Senior Center Building Committee, uh, two weeks ago, it was a little bit outdated, because it's a good meeting, but voted to use a hundred thousand dollars instead of the land use purchase, to use that towards consulting fees for a land use planner. So that's gonna help expedite it pretty significantly. Um, and we should have our third quote, hopefully by tomorrow. I did remind PVPC, and at that point, we can recommend a land use planner to the the site board.
That would be nice, yeah.
And get moving on that.
Yeah. And just to say that with the the money from the senior center through the Parsons Estate, that allows us to not have to search for other money from some other, some other place that we would have taken a little bit of our time to identify, probably. So that's great to discuss.
More time to approve, even once we have agreement.
So so this is great to to be able to use that for that purpose.
Yep. Uh, Wi-Fi is up and running, and Vadar, we had our Vadar training taking place. We're slowly implementing it, uh, one department at a time. Uh, we're slowly getting there. Um, there was some great pancakes served last week.
Yes.
Messed out, though. Big thanks to the fire chief, uh, who came and volunteered, as well as all the the staff and then the council agent board. So that was great. And, um, again, thanks to the fire chief and Dave, who responded to the emergency Thursday night, a leaking sprinkler system. So.
And that's part of what may have under, under.
In this building?
Yeah, down in the boiler room. So that may have been what affected our our microphones downstairs for tonight. Just the alarm system triggered something unexpectedly. So we'll work on that. But, good. So that's great. That's it for now?
Yep.
All right. Good. All right. How about a few select board reports? Who's got something? Cindy, anything to report from your end?
Yes. The the Open Space Committee hasn't met for a couple of weeks, but we have moved forward very diligently to work on a draft of the land use form that Stephen helped create. And, um, this is a really critical thing. We feel very strongly about this, and we're gonna talk about this at our meeting, which is the tenth of this month. And today I spoke to the chairperson, I mean, I'm sorry, the Conservation Agent, and he needs to speak to the Conservation Commission, but hopefully that's gonna be a joint submission between Open Space Committee and Conservation Commission to create this land use form draft. And again, a step towards what the land use planner can be using. So that, and then the second part of the Open Space Committee is that we are also really putting a lot of attention now into the goals and objectives outlined in the Open Space and Recreation Plan that really, it's got three years to go, but that's very high on our agenda right now. Um, in terms of the Board of Health, um, it's it's work as usual, but I will say at the most recent meeting, which was, um, a couple of weeks ago, just the night of the last meeting we had on the September seventeenth, the gentleman who came before the select board, who had a concern, his name was Aaron Bauer, and it was at least five, six weeks ago, he and his neighbor, who owned the house, were able to jointly meet with the Board of Health. Can't say they resolved everything, but there was a plan as to what was gonna do. And I bring this before the select board, because he made a point of coming before the select board.
This was for the tall grass issue and other things.
The animals running through and things like that. Ticks.
Good. Well, thank goodness.
So that's good. And there, beyond that, it's just, as I said, business as usual for the time being. Uh, what's my third committee? I forgot.
Alters, I'm sorry, assessors.
Oh, Board of Assessors, right. Board of Assessors has, we have moved towards, we're we're close to having the tax rate approved by the Department of Revenue for the coming year. And so all the ducks are in place in time. And then Principal Assessor will come before the select board for the proposal, I would say, within the next few weeks, next few meetings. Um, and effort has been put on good service. That's really been a critical thing for people to know. They can get answers. They can be notified in advance of something that's gonna happen, like an inspection, et cetera. Uh, and I I'm completely impressed with the office staff and the way they're working between Dave and Kathy. I think they're doing, really, personally, I think they're doing an excellent job. That's my thought. And if we need any feedback on that, and we'd like to know if we can improve even more. And we still have one open seat on the Board of Assessors, but another individual has expressed an interest. Let's see if that works out.
Okay. One one quick question. What's happening with the, any more of the Southampton property acquisition for the Mountain Waters Project? Is that moving along?
Project, yeah. Um, there are, um, slowly moving forward, I hear positive things on all of the properties that were listed when we went to town meeting to get CPC funding, as well as to understand the the private grant funding, et cetera, and the state funding. Um, on the other hand, there's issues on every single one of them, one thing or another. Um, I I don't have enough, I don't feel confident enough to be able to give specifics in a public meeting as to, I've heard certain things. Nonetheless, the message from Kestrel is, we'll make this happen. So that's.
Because they haven't, do they not have the deadline of the end of June, right? It's gotta be done this fiscal year?
Uh, depends on what acquisition it is. There is one that does apply for that, yes.
Well, we were assuming, I think, that, you know, the way this was structured, that various properties would kind of come to us one by one as they were ready to kind of get to their finalization. So that's fine. I just wanted to get it up to date.
Tend to bunch up around deadlines, is my experience. But you clarified, the deadline is more significantly the grant driven deadline rather than the individual income tax.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's the grant deadline is what I was referring to.
Well, I've lived in the other half, living with the landowners doing conservation deals. And I tell you, December thirty first is a BFD in terms of getting on record. And so.
I know that, I thought that the end of June was a drop dead date, kind of the grant process. So, yeah.
Understood.
I will get an update for the Open Space Committee meeting coming.
There'll be a lot of spring closings.
Good. All right. Dan?
Yeah, I I, we had the Housing Authority meeting, and I'd like to thank Stephen, who was able to attend and help in the getting our our land used survey together. So I think we we gave a good result and sent it off to the select board. So they'll receive that. So that's one thing that I'm sure we'll be picking up.
Great discussion about what people like, didn't like, looked at real world examples around the valley.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, and also, the Housing Authority, we also talked about the other property we have on College Highway, and and moving forward to that, the one that we're we're ideally looking to partner with Habitat for Humanity with. So that's, um, so looking at the wetlands of that property at the moment, that's where that property is at. Um, and then the Technology Committee met, and the important thing to note there is the conversation we had around where we're gonna, where that committee wanted to go with broadband. And I think that committee itself has has felt that that subject of broadband in itself is too much for that committee to handle in itself. So the Chair had proposed breaking that off and coming to the select board and proposing that become its own committee to to help move that forward, to make sure we have the right townspeople together to to have all the voices input and maybe have people like Scott involved, people that can really help move it forward, because it was just getting stuck. So.
Dan, on that, so the the MLP has passed both times. So wouldn't, I just throw this out there, wouldn't it stand to reason that we form a formal MLP commission, or commissioners, who would have oversight and jurisdiction over this? And, you know, it's still gonna be volunteer, because we don't pay anyone. But, I mean, because then they could kind of like fall under the MLP chapter. Here's your authority on that.
That might be one way to do that. Yeah, exactly. I think the the Whip City folks just reached out to us today. I got an email today. So I was like, are you guys ready to make a decision yet? So I think that's part of the challenge, is that you all have interviewed at least the two companies, at least two fiber companies.
Two fiber companies.
You know, it's, again, it's not gonna be a a cheap process, and then trying to figure out, you know, how to make the decision of which one to go with and so forth. And obviously, East Hampton's going with something totally different, and I think North Hampton's going with something else, another different kind of thing that neither one are similar to what we've been looking at. So I think it bears a discussion. So we probably need to have a a bigger discussion on that very soon. I did get an email from Megan about the the committee. So we'll we'll bring that up at another meeting here and talk about that in more detail. Yeah, those are things I had to mention. Good. All right, thanks. Stephen?
Uh, what's left? Plin Board meets more night, and we're gonna get a report from PDPC under our local technical assistance grant, looking at groundwater protection and where we are in comparison to our neighbors in the prior Barnes Aquifer.
Protection.
Protection. And 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 see if there's changes to be made to our bylaw. We know that we've had some, hit some speed bumps with its implementation, but, you know, we have been steadfast and are carrying forward on our intention to protect our groundwater. Made a lot of investments over many generations in that regard. So we want to make sure we stay up to date as well. I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, good.
I'm sure my committee's met, but I haven't been to any.
You've been too busy traveling.
I know. You know, cheers. The, we, I do know that on the Norris update, right, we've, we've completed all security upgrades that were primarily paid for through the state on the grant.
And show us the picture.
I, it's already posted.
Oh, we're good.
And we took possession of the new preschool toddler van today. It is bright red with extra red lights on it. So not to be confused for a, not to be white, right? Because there were some issues there. I have no doubt when these red lights come on, the traffic's gonna stop. So.
Yeah, it's got the big tiger logo on it, and all that.
Tiger inside of it, yep. Don't be messed, so.
It's quite cherry red. It will be very visible, I think.
Yeah. The fire chief's gonna be a little jealous.
So that's great.
That's it.
Uh, can I link onto the Norris report? I was at a meeting of the Friends of the Council, I mean, of the Council on Aging today. And there's a super volunteer who coordinated the effort to get a lot of donations of items that classrooms need, whether it's tissue moves, whether it's sanitary wipes, notebooks, pens, et cetera. And I'm gonna meet her neighbor, name is Mary Kennedy, and she works really hard, and she's a fabulous volunteer. And we want to make sure, the school committee knows that there was a lot of donations on that. And the teachers were really appreciative. And there was actually more than was needed at the beginning of the year, but the teachers were able to put some in a closet, because then when the kids run out of stuff later on.
Was that parallel or in conjunction with the PTO? Was it independent?
I believe it was independent, yes.
It was initiative by the Council on Aging itself. And it was, I mean, there were some basic supplies, but it was mostly, you know, like, like you said, like, you know, wipes and things like that. But it but it was really a lot of notebooks and markers and all sorts of things. And there were boxes and boxes of stuff that was delivered to the school.
Still collecting, because she says teachers run out of certain things, like sanitary, you know, the antibacterial wipes and and tissues, et cetera. But on top of that, they're gonna be working on getting donations of hats and gloves for people who need those kinds of things during the colder months. So I just want to make a good point on that.
So, yeah, Mary Kennedy led this up, and this was basically an initiative of the COA itself. And they did a great job collecting all sorts of stuff. One of the things, Cindy, just I'm thinking about it, somewhere I saw, and I can't remember the date, there's gonna be a flu clinic, Board of Health?
Uh, yeah.
October twenty-third.
October twenty-third, okay. And that'll be here at Town Hall? Or or this group?
At the Council on Aging.
It's not at the school, it's at the Council on Aging.
If you want to get on October 4th, it's open door at Big Y. You can just walk in while the store's open and get your flu vaccines.
Big Y, oh, wow. Okay, that's interesting. Okay, good. So, just so people know. Just on my end, on a couple committees, Grants Committee, I sort of reported on already, we got information that we did not get the Assistance Firefighters Grant, which is a big federal competitive grant for the tanker pumper. So we will reapply. I think we will just basically, pretty much use the same information. We will just have to update some basic statistics, which Chief Fosoli will be able to do with me to pull that together. We also got feedback on the historical Bruin Grant, which was the one for getting repointing done at the Old Town Hall. They said, thanks, it was a good application, but it would have been stronger if there was already activity happening in that building besides the fire department, I mean, besides the police department. That if it was already a cultural center, it would have had more strength to it. So anyway, there was like, good application, but your other applications were stronger than what we were able to justify in terms of its long-term usage and its being what they call an economic anchor in the community. So because it's not there yet, that's where we fell short. But, you know, they were encouraging. At least we got feedback, which doesn't always happen with many grant programs. The Grant Committee is meeting on the, hello, on the 8th. We've got two possible members who are interested in, and they've been invited to attend, so we can strengthen our committee a little bit. Bylaws Committee will be meeting up also within another week or 10 days. And now that we have a third person on the committee, and we're, as I mentioned before, we're working on the swimming pool bylaw and the use of public buildings in particular. And we'll be doing a cost efficiency meeting very soon, probably not next week, but the week after. And then lastly, I'm putting a call out to various names that I've been given for folks that want to join in on a new committee, which is sort of planning for the 250th birthday of Southampton, trying to figure out what we might pull together for that. So I'm going to try and schedule that for the week of the 14th, and hopefully we'll get at least a first meeting done, and people can be joining in as we go along. But we just want to get something on the ground to get some brainstorming done and thinking about that. So lots of, lots of many meetings to get tidied up and scheduled here, but we'll look at them.
Capital planning, is that going?
Capital planning is getting tied in right now to the cost efficiencies meeting. So we're kind of taking over that activity. The Chiefs in particular, and Highway and Water have turned in their capital plans for their, basically their equipment and vehicle replacement. We're going to consolidate those and re-verify them against what we have from the assessors and the accountant to see that we've got the most correct version of everything, which has been a little bit of an issue.
Right, we have a draft of some tweaks to the bylaw.
Yes, and there was very, very little to go with that, but we'll pick that back up again to the capital funding bylaw. So, yeah, so we're going to be working on that, and Scott's been pulling together some ideas for a, basically a capital planning exercise that's going to be something a bit more useful, I think, than maybe than what we've done before. So we'll be working on that. So that'll be part of our next cost efficiency.
I was impressed with the volume of tonight's package. And when I realized that it was all the warrants for both, I don't know whether the panic increased or decreased, but I looked at the full fiscal year expenses against budget. And when I got to the special purpose accounts, I knew I was beyond my understanding. And I didn't know whether it would come through a planning cycle and all would be revealed, but there were a bunch of things where it appeared there was a remaining balance that didn't make sense. Other places, a carried deficit that didn't make sense.
We'll get to that when we get to the revenue and expense. I think we're still catching up on that.
Okay, okay.
That's part of the problem.
So that's the answer, it'll come?
I think so.
It's been identified and readdressed. Thank you.
Okay, let's get into some new visits. Scott, Classification Compensation Plan update. I know you've been working on that. No, we're going to keep on moving here. We've got two real big issues, I think, probably that are in Scott's bailiwick, which is the classification plan, and then just talking about this budget book draft. The other ones, I think, are probably not lengthy issues, so I think we'll be able to move somewhat efficiently here, we hope.
So I will, I'll be quick on this one.
I'm just going to move.
So the next steps on the classification plan, so I was able to get some funding from the Giants Committee to hire Deb Bradley to help out with the scoring and the review of the ranking of the positions. Art Lawrence and I, we've completed our independent scoring, so we're going to work with Deb and get that done as soon as possible, and then come with at least some kind of consensus to present to the select board. We would need probably a next meeting, do an executive session to talk about how it's going to impact our contractual employees, specifically Randall, because his contract's up, and we want to make sure we have internal equity when we look at this, so.
Oh, so when you say contractual, I was thinking 1099 folks, but you're talking about highly compensated exempt employees?
Yes.
It's a difference, yeah.
Well, let's take care of the hourly folks here who have been slaving away without a contract.
Yeah. And then we would finalize the skills and rankings. There's a couple of questions I want to present to the board tonight, and then hopefully implement it in October or early November at the latest. So with the most recent, talking about the hourly employees, getting all the information, what we came up with is, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, executive session, I'll show you all the backup material. But essentially, what we found out was our actual salaries are at 72% of the market. Our maximum ranges on the current compensation plan that we use is actually 92% of the market. So our system isn't that far behind. The problem is there's 18 steps to it, and if you do a step a year, you're never going to reach market, ever.
Yeah, truly.
So that's a little bit of an issue. That shows that. And then just to refresh, this is the exempt employees and the actual comparable averages. The midpoint is a little bit different, because usually with hourly employees, you go more for the maximum, because they're on a step system, so they'll more likely end up at the top step. So that's a more accurate depiction of what the market is, whereas with non-exempt or exempt employees, they usually have ranges or a different, a little bit of a different structure. So midpoint is usually the market.
And the exempt employees, do you, are we able to break down further our two elected individuals?
Yep.
All right.
Just, maybe just for people that are listening, or will be listening, just to redefine exempt and non-exempt for people?
Non-exempt is hourly, exempt is salary.
Exempt from overtime.
And so basically, our department heads.
There are some, there are some exempt positions actually doing overtime, but for the most part.
Yeah, basically, the exempt positions are our department heads for those.
Can I ask a question in terms of the previous, oh, anyway, it's a handout here. Inspection slash public health, you've got conservation agent, health agent, inspector, administrative assistant. Where's the director?
Under exempt.
Oh, it's under exempt.
It's not the current practice, but that's where it is.
Oh, okay.
Where it would be moving to.
Sorry? Keep going, okay.
So this is just depending on which place the select board goes. This is a, you know, really a draft for our non-exempt pay wage, pay scale for our hourly employees. It cuts it down from 18 to 10, which is usually the normal, what most people use. It also doesn't restrict someone from, you know, if you have that highly qualified employee, it doesn't restrict someone from having to start at a step one. So defining, you know, where most people would start, that's a different discussion. And then using the 11 grade systems, looking at our positions, I'm just doing the back of the napkin math, that would give us enough of a range to be comparable, to be competitive in all the ranges based on the market, so.
So from the grade, you're actually, the lower grade is actually a grade nine. It's going from nine up to one, rather than the other way down? Your grade level?
Oh, yeah. Well, we can reverse it, or however we see we want to name it. I just didn't want to use letters.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But most of our employees would go right in the middle, the middle area. Some of the more technical ones would be in the higher, and then some of our other ones would be towards lower end of the scale.
Do you indicate back there on the hourly, which grade these jobs are? Or no, we don't have that?
Not yet, that's okay. We're going to have to wait for executive session.
Okay.
So the question is, how do we want to structure our exempt or our salary employees? And there's a couple of ways that we can do this. And I mentioned these before, you know, one way to do it is using straight ranges, where there's a midpoint, which represents the market, there's a low point, and there's a high point. And if you're a competent employee that has, you know, the qualifications, you start at the midpoint as market. And if you have someone with 20 or 30 years' experience, they would be in the higher area. If you get someone that's right out of maybe college and you don't have any experience, you'd be more towards the minimum. There are some pros to that, that gives, you know, more flexibility, so you're not tied into an actual step. It encourages growth, so as you gain experience, as you gain, you know, education credentials, you can have your salary adjusted in the range and as employee-specific. So we look at each employee and their specific experience, education qualifications, you know, their performance, and then place them within that range. The cons are, it's difficult to obtain a consistency. It takes a while to do that, and you really have to stay on top of it. But once you get there, it becomes easier over time, and it is more subjective than objective, which is, steps are very objective. You're here for five years, you're on the fifth step. So it's a little bit more judgmental. The next way that we could do it would be a hybrid system, and there's ways that you can do this as well. So this kind of combines both steps and a merit-based system. And if you look at Needham's, Needham does this system for their higher compensated employees, so people that are, you know, like major department heads, DPW directors, you know, planners, you know, their public safety personnel. So they essentially, they do have a range, they have a step one and a step 11 for those top five columns or rows, but they have a merit range in between. So they get up to step four, and then any additional compensation is based on their merit. Whereas the other one, other positions in the exempt is really just a step system. But looking at, what we could do is essentially, where that yellow line is, is what we, what Needham does is, it goes up to a certain point where you do a step system, and then to the right of the yellow bar, you can either do ranges, like Needham has done, or you could do steps. And depending on the merit performance review, as they get more qualifications, it gives more flexibility for those high-performing employees to be able to retain them.
So that would be based on an outstanding performance appraisal? That you'd be able to jump that yellow bar and go into something else? And if you got to, if you got to the midpoint, say, whatever, seven, and you had, you were doing your job, you're competent, you just got a basic satisfactory rating, are you kind of frozen at the seven?
Right, so you would still be at the seven, and you would get a COLA, because the actual wages have to be adjusted every year.
Okay.
So it would only be for specific incidents where compensation needs to be more than market. So it kind of puts the brakes on it at a certain point.
Got it. So it's somewhat of an encouragement to try and do better, in a way, so that you can jump up the next year.
Right, exactly. But at the very least, it's in the middle market.
Yeah, the question is, if you're going to apply COLAs across the board, are you willing to hold the line and not advance somebody a step? And so I was a seven this year. I didn't qualify, you know, the cost of living, but I really didn't live up, and my appraisal didn't do that, so now I'm going back to a six. Are you ever going to move anybody down? I think the answer's no.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, so then they just stay there until they retire.
They would just stay there until they did better. The next year, they might have a better performance appraisal, and then they would be able to jump that midpoint, right?
But, sorry, were you about to, but appraisal, the problem with appraisals are, unless you have one voice doing it across the board, it depends on what board you answer to or who happens to write your result.
Yeah, right, yeah. No, I think that's the bigger issue.
But that was what I was going to raise, is that there should be a very closely defined set of bullet points that we advise, but we actually train people on how to do the performance evaluations, so that it's impossible to be equal all the way along the line. But we can make every effort to make sure we know.
Yeah, it's similar to a 360, but when I go back to, you know, my ask for this next budget from my seat is a part-time HR person. Because you got to centralize, you got to get away from PPQ.
I totally agree with that.
And you got to centralize.
Yes.
And it's not the town administrator.
It should be a qualified professional in that role, yes.
Right, who can, and a mid, like, somebody with, you know, five to six years, that doesn't have director experience, because Scott has that. But you need somebody to do the work that Scott is just, put his eyes across.
That's right, and it's objective, and absolutely agree with that.
And that way, if we do that, Scott's got to sign up for five to 10 years.
But I think the point is to have a meaningful performance appraisal system, which I think we would all agree has been seriously lacking here. There've been attempts that, you know, certain departments have tried it better than others and have tried to work at it, but others really have fallen short. And so I think we just don't have anything that people believe in well enough to take it seriously. And I think if we can do something to prove that, that would be good.
And until now, to quote Senator Vils, there's never been a carrot. You've got the stick, you got to do this, but we've never had a carrot to offer.
That's a good point, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Scott, sorry.
Do you agree with that, with everything we said?
Yes.
Whatever he said.
And then the third one is just a traditional step system, which a lot of times use as well. There's some pros to this, is it's the easiest to maintain. Everything's laid out, you've adjusted every year, you don't really have to worry about merit increases, which is one of the cons to it as well. Everyone's treated the same. So once you reach the top, there's no additional, there's no incentives, because you're at the very top step, so you're going to get COLAs for the rest of your year. There's no reason to kind of break through. But it does allow people to plan and see in the future where it's going to be. So that's another option.
You mentioned at some point about adjusting the wage scale every year, is what I think I'm understanding, right? So whatever was on, say, grade five, step three, that difference between a step three and a step four, is that equal to what a COLA would be?
No, so if you're in a step five, or grade five, step three, and you didn't do very well, your grade five, step three would just go up by 1% that year. So along with the entire pay schedule, so you move everything up by a percentage.
Plus the COLA.
Well, the percentage is the COLA.
Right, so you're going to get the COLA adjustment, which isn't baked in, right? It's a variable that the select board would pick every year.
Exactly.
And say if we said we want to do a 2.5%, the current grade five, step three would increase by 2%.
Right.
But so would six. And that person going from five would go to six, and then, I guess, this 1%.
Uh-huh. Okay. Because I think that, I think in general, though, the way the scale sort of currently is, I think that the, what am I going to say? The distance, if you will, between the steps is usually been like 2% or maybe 3%?
Well, we forced that issue when it went to the 18 two years ago, as a placeholder.
Correct, okay, yeah, yeah. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if you up, if you do this every year, so we know, an employee knows where they should be following on the next step, but that, so that's a step increase, is there a COLA on top of the step increase? That's my question, I guess.
Yes.
There is.
If so voted by the select board.
If voted by the select board, okay.
And funded.
Does a COLA, is there any background information on a yearly COLA based on some federal guidelines or state guidelines? There is, there's not just, we don't make it up.
Right. So what I used to do is I'd have to reach out to the entire state and get maybe about 40 to 50 examples of what people are increasing their non-union employees by. Then I would also reach out to comparable communities and see what generally they're increasing it by. Then you have the Bureau of Labor Statistics with, you know, their regular, you know, cost of labor, things like that, so.
I mean, traditionally, we've been like 2% or 2.5% because that's the maximum we can actually manage to afford.
Right, right. So I came from private industry, but we always had the opportunity for management to give bonuses. Is that not going to happen in the municipal sphere?
It can, I, I'm familiar with that, and it can happen, we just need to have a system to do it.
Okay. Do you see that as something that would be part of this? Because when you reach the top, you know, that's, you get COLA, that's it.
Well, it depends on which one of these we choose, though.
Right. But if you're the top as the assistant, right, you're, it's now driving you to become the department head. Right, so I mean, you keep going up. I mean, if you, if you're the...
But sometimes department head positions don't come open, you know? The guy that's, or the woman that's the department head is only...
That's why we need the evaluations.
Which by what?
We need the evaluations.
And we need it documented, we need to be able to go back.
Right, no, I think that's the challenge. We haven't been, you know, doing that very well. And being consistent across the board, I think is a goal that we need to definitely set out there. But, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
So if we, and what Cindy said, if we have like our assistant town accountant, and they're brand-new to the position, and they get all the credentials, and they do really good over a period of years, and they get more education, and then they get their certificates, then that might be a place where we do a standing in the range adjustment. So maybe they go from step three to a step five, or something like that. A bonus would be, you know, Bradley's fixing all these things with the, with the budget, and he spent a month and a half burning the midnight oil, and he did really good, so we're going to give a sum of money, whatever that's based on, that won't affect his salary or retirement or anything like that.
It's a separate amount of money.
So it's kind of like a two, two left, like two left. So the first example, you wouldn't give just bonus to, because you would want to keep that person.
Sure.
All right.
So that's the, my recommendation for the three things at the select board for person guidance. And then the next question is where do we, what are our goals for the next one to three years? You know, where do we want to be in comparison to our other communities? If we have a market that's considered 100%, and these are comparable communities from, you know, East Hampton and Belchertown and Granby and Hadley, you know, do we want to be exactly there? Do we want to be a little bit below, a little bit above? I've, you know, been here six, seven months, and we have lost some people due to the compensation, but we've also been able to get some really good people, too. So we kind of have to decide what we're looking at.
So when I, I have a similar process at the agency. We make that, we answer that question by position. It's not, certain positions, we want to be at 105%. Other positions, we may only want to be at 95%. Depending on, you know, is there only, is, are there 10 people currently in that position? Bigger pool. If it's a unique job, you know, I'm thinking, you know, like laborers at the highway department. If we were fully hired, there's four. Of course, they're not under this scale. So that's a bigger group of people versus the highway superintendent. Who, you know, there's different priorities on, on where we want. You could argue we should want to retain everybody at the same level, but I just throw that out there, that sometimes it's by classification or by grades to be considered.
That's a good thought. I guess my original thought would be that we'd be slightly under the median, and that would be something to work toward. You know, whether that's 90% or whatever that is.
Well, it's one to three years.
Yeah.
And certainly, this isn't, it's not set in stone, so it's going to be a multi-year process where we're going to evaluate it and take a look and see where we're moving, and are we, you know, where do we want to be? Also, you know, we have to treat exempt and non-exempt separately, because a lot of times, you know, exempt employees, because they are, you know, more on the range, and non-exempt are on steps, you know, there is a difference in, in market. So going back to what we saw, you know, our exempt employees are a little bit closer to where they should be than our non-exempt.
Right.
So do you want to set, you know, set the bar a little bit differently for each one of those?
Right, but, but I don't disagree with that, but I'd also say, I mean, how many exempt employees do we have? Eight? Of which, or nine? Of which four of them are under employment contracts?
Yep.
So I, so I would expect those four that, you know, create those employment contracts, those would be on par with their peers, close, right? So again, another breakout group, because those that have the employment contracts, there's other incentive compensations within that other than just their annual salary.
Yeah, so we might need a two-tiered system right there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, perfect example, you know, equity, right? Fire chief's got heated seats, police chief doesn't, you know? So that's worth something. I tell you, it's a bone of contention between these two.
I thought our police chief was always in the hot seat.
That's why he doesn't need it.
But, but you're probably going to get to this, but this, this is wonderful, because finances is important, but it isn't the only reason people come to work someplace or stay. And so are you going to talk about that, or is this all financial today?
I think we have to look at everything as a package, too. I mean, we have great health insurance, but the problem is we don't really advertise that, and people don't think about that when they, you know, a lot of people don't really look at that.
That's how young they are.
Yeah, exactly.
So we pay 80%?
Right, but our actual plans are really good.
No, no, I know, but even the percentage...
80% is great.
Yes.
But I mean, considering we don't have a deductible, and most expensive thing's 250, it's like, that's like 20 years ago, wasn't the normal plan? It's really, really...
And this might be, this might be executive session, but it's like, it'd be, my, for, to get an answer from me on this, where are we now? And that's percentage. What's the dollar impact to get to, say, the 100? Hypothetically, you say we're at 87. Okay, well, what's the dollar impact to get to 90, 95, and 100, one, two, three year? And then at the 90, this number is this, that represents how much of the current, well, that's only a one and a quarter increase over our existing wage. Okay, to your point earlier, Chris, we know we can kind of go 2.5 before we even touch the money we've already set aside. You know, so the pre-plan that we've already done, assuming the 2.5% increase and the additional funds we have, I guess, from where we are now, where does that put us? And that would kind of like be, in my mind, our max for year one. And we'd want that or something less to start and then phase into it.
To phase in, yeah, no, I think it's got to be a sort of a phased system, yeah, I would agree with that.
So I could probably start doing a 90% through the cost analysis and do all the wages on that, and then see where that kind of goes, and then if you want to go further or shorter, and I can kind of guesstimate once we get...
You can get my point about what's the percent, you know, if we're paying $100,000 now and to go there, it's going to be 110, right? Well, that's a 10% increase on wages.
Right.
So we know we can't really afford that right off the bat, but...
And I'd like to see that not just in year N plus one, but I'd like to see it 10 years now, because we're building and escalating structure. And if, I mean, directly, to the extent we're successful at long-term retention of employees, our costs go up in a nonlinear fashion. So, you know, at least five years, but if you figure out what that increment is in percentage, then you've got three lines. If we're going to 90% or 95 or somewhere else.
Okay, good. So does that get you enough answers tonight to move forward, or we still need to answer the other?
The other question.
The other question.
So the, so that last one, the other one?
The yellow one?
With the merit up in the top section?
Yeah.
No, that, this one here. So I like, nope.
Yeah, that's the merit one.
Yeah, but this isn't, the green, the green one.
Different version. One that has a hybrid.
Yeah, the hybrid, I guess.
Okay, it's this one. There we go.
Yeah.
No, no.
It's just more easily expressed as the one with whatever talent had already been chosen.
This one, this is the one.
Yeah, this is the Needham.
So, so I like this approach, but I'd have to know which position is in what line item. For example, like I could see, you know, 12 through 16, and it might be consolidated, the department heads that have employment contracts, that section there, but, but those that don't have employment contracts, they're just followed because they're, they're, you know, the director of library doesn't have an employment contract right now. So what is, you know, one of those lines, 1 through 11, be for the librarian, so the librarian trustees could go forward. They may make an argument later on that, well, we want that merit range in there to be able to reward and things of that nature, but...
Yeah. Once we rank the positions and there's, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, where all of them kind of fit in, and you come to an agreement on that, you can say, positions A, B, C, D, or A, B, C, D, E.
And then, like, I think, and this is where I come back to elected officials that are compensated, they need to be on a grade and a step, and that's it. And then at town meeting, that gets voted. And if the town wants to move them up, they can move them up. We can say this is, you have to take the vote, but here are the steps going up.
Right.
But any increase to an elected official being paid should be pulled out of the cumulative budget, spotlight shined on it, and said, because these are the wages for your elected officials. And most, and you brought this up before, most communities, that's the first line on, you're going to set the wages for your employees and elected officials, and you list who the elected officials are. Because I don't feel comfortable with us doing, we don't elect them.
Yeah.
Right? So it's up to the voters to determine whether there's merit raises or increases or evaluations.
Boy, do they.
There's no, there's no evaluation, there's no performance evaluation for them.
No, they're, under master general law, an elected official...
Just every three years at the ballot box.
But, but, under master general law, an elected official only has to be in the building one day out of the year, and they get their full pay, whether they do anything or not.
That's right.
So I think it's up to the voters to decide, yep, you earned an increase this year, so we'll print this forward, or no, we'll leave you where you are.
Yeah. The, on the, back on one thing, you said, so from, say, the 13, from, looking at the sideways here, from 13 to 16, why wouldn't all the department heads be in that one, whether they're contractual or not?
Because I think the four people, the four current positions that have employment contracts, there's a lot of, it's more than just the wage.
Right.
That's in there that we don't permit other department heads to have.
Correct, right.
Because, in my mind, those four positions are considered key positions.
Yeah.
That I would argue need to be above the 100%.
Okay.
Because if any one of those four spots went open, we'd have a problem. Not necessarily, I mean, any department head that leaves, but they're more key positions.
And so how then does the, in the merit range, how does the five, six, seven, eight, nine, how do we determine this?
Well, they probably, every time you hire somebody...
The new value there, I mean, the new...
But you probably, or, you would probably always hire somebody at step four.
Uh-huh.
Because, again, you're talking about highway superintendent, the fire chief, the police chief, town administrator, I don't think they're coming in on a step one.
Yeah.
Right? Because we're going to want somebody that has experience.
But at some point, so based on the merit, then you're going to be giving them something for step five, whatever that was.
Negotiated through the, through their employment contract, with everything else.
But if they're not on...
And it just tells us what the ceiling is. Because there was a, a final step in there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there was, yeah. That's the maximum it could be. That's a little bit different than the slide before, then.
Yeah, slide before gave to everybody, potentially. And I would argue, if it's there, employees are going to make an argument, no, I'm entitled to that, because it's right there in my slip, steps.
But they still have to have a better-than-satisfactory performance appraisal?
That has yet to be developed, nor, and right now, if we pass this, it's to PPP to conduct that and enforce that.
Which includes two employees?
Well, right. Of which would be covered, yep, they're covered under this, so it'd be conflict, I would think, but...
Oh, you would have, one would be subordinate to the other department head. Or the department head, yeah.
Actually, I take that back, because I'm pretty sure we gave Bradley, or we gave the town accountant an employment contract.
But, yeah, he's not on contract.
So those not on contract is the assessor, the treasurer-collector, the building commissioner, the health director, library director, COA director, and town clerk. Two of which are elected.
Two of which are elected, yeah.
And so the four contractual ones are?
There's, Bradley was, makes five.
Town administrator.
Police chief, fire chief, highway superintendent.
Water, water, also?
Yes, but...
Water super?
Yes.
But the fact that that's a different kind of fund doesn't put them here?
That's where my mind goes, it says it's the enterprise and...
Yeah, enterprise, yeah.
I don't, I don't think their, his current wages are on there, but, I don't know. So what's the third question?
So is that...
Oh, it's only you.
Does that get you what you need, or are we...
Focus on the hybrid?
What's everybody think? So not this one, but the next one, is that what you're saying?
I'm in favor of the next one.
Anybody thoughts, either one?
But this is, we're still doing the multiple grades and steps, it looks so complicated. Why would, we go back to the one that doesn't have all the numbers in it with the merit thing?
The yellow one?
No, the, the yellow bar, right.
So that's got 13.
How does this get, Phil, how does it, the other one's just an example for Needham's, that's why the numbers are there.
Right. So this is still going to have numbers in it?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So when you're, you know, you're an employee, you come in, you know, say you're a D4, you're going to be able to look at a scale and say, okay, next year, I should be at a D5.
But this one gives everybody the opportunity for the merit increase, which is fair to me.
Correct.
Yeah.
It gives everybody the chance to have a merit increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Not just the exempt employees.
That's, just strikes me as...
This is exempt, this is only exempt, not hourly, right?
Oh, sorry. Yes. These are the exempt ones, that's right.
So what's the difference between the two?
My argument would be key employees, you have more flexibility, flexibility to retain them, and non-key employees, who are still department heads, would have a logical progression of their steps.
So you, you're, you're the Needham example?
Yeah, with obviously the Southampton numbers.
Can you go to the Needham one more time, please?
Instead of the Needham numbers.
Yeah.
Because like, grade 16, number 11, that's got to be superintendent of schools.
Usually chief financial officer.
Not in Southampton.
No. No, that's, that's, yeah, no, that's, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is just the exempt, but then for the non-exempt, we do a similar...
Yeah.
Okay.
And then again, each year, the, you know, step one, 2177, would go up by 2% in theory, or 2.5%.
Right.
As it would apply to the whole thing.
The whole scale gets adjusted.
And then they would go from one to two. So not only are they getting the cost of living adjustment that gets applied everywhere, but they're getting whatever the difference between 2177 and 2256 is percentage-wise.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I like this, the hybrid, those two approaches with the exempt and non-exempt. And I think my, my comment would be, to get to the place where we can use the hybrid approach, where there's a merit range for exempt employees, we're going to need that HR component in place, where we have the capability to do the performance reviews. That's something we don't have right now. So I can see how we can handle the non-exempt employees with this, this similar that we do now, but there's another step there.
Yeah, and I think, I think there'd have to be some other bylaw changes. Right? Because right now, we have department, we have some department has to report to a commission or a board. So it goes back to that 2016 restructure of town government.
Yeah. Which is first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah, which is first, that's the big question.
Chicken feet.
Yeah, really.
Are we giving Scott the answer?
I think the hybrid helps, yes, I'll have some options for that.
Let's see what it looks like, anyway, and then if we, if we don't like it, we'll send you back.
I'm always happy to be outvoted. I have no problem with.
No, I mean, I think it's worth taking a look at and seeing.
It's easy to go to the other direction.
Well.
Fixed.
But honestly, in that tone, if it's easy to look at, then I want to look at all three options.
Yeah.
And let's populate them all, not just focus on one.
Yeah, well, but on the, back to Cindy's point, I guess, even though we were looking at the non-exempt scale, which doesn't have anything that says merit in it.
Yeah, that's true.
If somebody had an outstanding performance appraisal, they'd be able to jump maybe two steps rather than just one step, no? If we designed it that way.
A lot of union contracts might have that, where you don't get a new step until you get a performance review.
Yeah.
And then if you have an exceptional performance review, you can skip two steps.
Yeah, but I'm not even talking union people, just your basic non-union.
But adopt the same language.
Right.
And put it into the.
Right, so they'd have a chance to have a bonus, if you will.
I used to work for Bay State Health Systems with, you know, thousands of employees, and they were hourly employees, but they were highly compensated professional people.
Right, so if you're, if you were, if you did really well, you'd get your normal step anyway, but if you did really, really well, you could maybe potentially get a second step on even the non-exempt scale. So that, that kind of equates, in my head anyway, to this hybrid model, right? A bit.
So like, using a fixed step scale, but the increases could be based on actual performance reviews.
That's right.
Yeah, cool. I mean, the one step would be standard, but if you did better than that.
That would allow us to.
Well, I could, well, okay, so I could go along with that if you eliminate the merits, because there's too much, it's all in the eye of the person doing the evaluation. And they may be good, but you've got to get past the select board, and, you know, there could be three members that get elected because they, they got a vote contention with one person. I mean, it's happened before, it's happened here, it's happened in other towns.
Sure, sure.
You know, it's, so doing it this way, and hey, you got the evaluation, everybody jumps a step, then maybe it should be.
So you're not for merit increases, huh?
Well, I'm for merit only if we have a dedicated HR person.
That's what I.
That's going to have a little flat across the board.
That's a dance.
Yeah, but we don't have that in place right now.
But how closer are we to getting something like that? Do we get it?
Next town budget.
We'll come in this next year.
Or a few months away.
Yes, I mean, there's that, but there's also, you know, Concom's going to want more money for their part-time position, and then with, is plant, planning.
Well, we're talking about trying to do a combination plan, Concom person, or something like that, yeah.
Right, and in theory, we should be adding, if we stick to our plan, we should be adding at least two more paramedics.
Right.
Right, to get that staffing.
That's a separate wage scale, which that chief has been working on, apparently, yeah.
So I don't know if there's room to add that extra person.
Yeah.
On the other commitments we've already made.
Can we not get it? No, we have to have it, that's what I see.
I think we're going to really truly implement this, it can't be done by PQB, this has got to be done by.
Agreed.
And we're expecting all these things from Scott, and he can't spend all his time doing this.
Yeah, Scott, just to ask for another thing, I think part of this consideration is thinking through the steps of, to get to implementation. If we were to say, have that merit, that does include getting some type of HR staff to, to do the calibration between the scoring from different people and all that great stuff. How we could, how we could get there, because I think that's a couple steps we have to get.
Like a roadmap?
Yeah, roadmap, yeah.
Kind of thing, yeah, yeah.
Which will be useful when it comes time to sell it to the town.
Right, yeah, that's true. We'll have to figure it out sometime. Sure, yeah, exactly, that's a good point, and I think.
I will do what my years pay in, just like.
How much are you making? I want it.
Double zero.
Transparency.
Exactly. You get two zeros, I get one.
See, I'm crazy.
Yeah, no, no, I think that, that's a point, you know, getting some sort of an idea of how long it's going to take us to get there. I mean, I think we really want to, you know, we've been, people have been waiting for adjustments, so I mean, I think your point of doing something in November, we've got to act on something, at least for the non-exempt people, if nothing else. I mean, we've got to at least do something.
Right.
And make some adjustments there, but I think, you know, for a performance appraisal system, and honestly, I haven't looked at the PQB handbook lately to see how well-defined that is in terms of the, the form that people are supposed to use and the different categories that are there. I know there's some template that people are supposed to use as department heads, but, you know, really defining.
I don't know, that's the way I looked at it.
Really defining, you know, what's satisfactory, what's, what's basic, what's satisfactory, what's meritorious, and what's, you know, outstanding.
And some of that, honestly, the select board owns that. Right, because the select board mandates that the town administrator conduct these evaluations, so we should.
Of those that report to him, but.
Right, but did our predecessors ever actually develop one to say, this is the one you shall do?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, well, there's a starting point.
Yeah, yeah, now I'll have to go back and dig it out, but I know there was some number of years to it. Anyway, we'll get on.
Some are floppy disks somewhere.
Yeah.
It's just a tablet.
To ask a silly question, but I think it's worthwhile. Is there a possibility of, to make, can we get this rolled out? It would be most efficient if we could, we talked about a part-time HR person, if we could start, if we could get that person on board sooner, then they can start helping Scott work through this whole process. I don't know how, if you can, if you could get that.
I'd prioritize that over the land use, Concom planner.
What's the like, sorry, Chris, what's the likely, what's the timeline of free cash certification? Because we need a funding source in order to do that deal.
I'm just throwing it out there.
A couple months.
By March, February, March, maybe? Oh, I hope so.
Well, earlier than that, no.
Because that'd be the trigger for the special town meeting, at which time we could ask for that money. And we still, whether we use it or not, we have that other 76,000 that we stuck in the capital account.
Right.
For a potential vehicle.
Yeah, well, and, you know, depending on where we end up trying to reconcile some of this ARPA money, you know, we could temporarily do, we've got to reobligate anything we're going to reprogram by the end of December.
Yeah.
It's got to be spent in two years from then.
When you're saying reconciliation, I thought you were saying we're, we overspent.
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, just trying to still tweak figures and, do we really have that amount left? Still working on it, believe me. We could conceivably, like we did with the conservation agent or with, who else, the planner person, fund that for X amount of time out of ARPA money with the intent that we build it into a budget.
To the budget, yeah.
So I think we could find some money sooner rather than later, because I'm relatively sure we will have some monies to reprogram.
Aren't we going to get some more ARPA? Didn't I hear from the governor, no?
No, 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 it was a warning to hurry up and get it obligated before you lose it.
Okay.
That's what I saw, there might have been something else, but, so I think there's a way to, you know, as we progress on this, and we maybe go into more detail in an executive session on this, we can talk about, you know, what would we need to get, you know, what would it cost us to get a part-time HR person?
And that's, that's why I like Dan's thought about a little rollback, and it doesn't have to be much, it can be just a one sheet paper, bullet point, boom, 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 and then, because then it's like, okay, so two days, we work about seven and a half hours in here a day, so we're talking about 15 hours if we're starting with a two-day-a-week person.
Yeah.
You know, you know what the annual salary is, so 40% of that is a start point, what is that number?
Yeah.
Is that in the ARPA money, or?
Yeah.
How are we compensating Deb Radway for the?
Finance reserve fund.
Finance reserve fund, I'm just wondering how.
Yeah.
Deb Radway.
Oh, yeah, the finance committee, yeah, they pay for that. That was $1,200.
Yeah, okay, $1,200 to have her do this little task.
Great.
Okay, so are we done on this part right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let us keep on moving. Thanks, Scott, for pulling this together, I know you've been working on this a lot, and I think it's a, it's a long overdue exercise, and we are making progress, it's not, not quick, but I really do feel like we're, we're moving forward on this, so thanks for your work on this. Now to the next one that you've been chugging away at, you want to take on the budget book idea?
Yep, so one of the things that, when you look at our current budget, how we do things, there's not a lot of information. You know, the standard that I, we're not going to get there anytime soon, but GFWA has guidelines to win an award for what a, a municipal budget could be. Things like having a, you know, goal-setting exercises, having an organizational chart, defining, you know, what employees and the goals, what the strategies are for each one, what the budget overview is, where do we get our funds and where do we spend them, the relationships, you know, what our financial policies are. And a lot of towns really have some great budgets, like, you know, like Middleton really tells a story with their budget books, so that citizens can, can look at it easily, find out exactly, what do they spend money on, where are their priorities, what are they trying to accomplish, what are they not trying to accomplish, so that they can see, you know, telling the story of the department. And then having a lot more information available, where do they actually spend their money, you know, what the organizational chart is, how many full-time employees do they have?
Right.
Things like that. Here, this is another one from Stonem, which is a little bit more text-focused, but has the goals, has all the accomplishment, you know, at least, you know, for people to see that. So putting together a budget book is something I would like to kind of focus on this year, it's going to take a little bit extra time, but I think working with each department is definitely doable, because a lot of the stuff that we already do is going to the annual report, and a lot of our departments also keep a lot of great stats that they're not really showing.
Right.
So focusing on, you know, what the department description is, that's something that'll be recycled every year. What changes happened in your FY '26 budget, you know, what are the highlights? Did you get a new employee? Did you have an emergency? Did you buy new vehicle? Things like that. You know, where are you getting your revenue and grants? Did you see an increase in your fees? Did you get a $25,000 hybrid vehicle grant for this year? Things like that. And that should be really highlighted. And then what are your accomplishments and successes? And then also what are some of the potential issues that are going to be coming up in the next year or two, or three, or four, or five? You know, are we going to have a lot of retirements? Are we going to have a need for extra capital funding? Are we going to have five police cruisers that are going to be broken down all at once? Are we going to have to do resources and technology, things like that? Very basic, one paragraph things, just to kind of map it out, and then being able to put everything together to visually show it onto that. So looking at our actual budget, kind of talk, I was talking, you know, I'm talking to Bradley on this, but looking at ways that we can better make it both easier and more transparent for our departments. When you, when you look at our current way that we do it, you know, director wages expenses, director wages expenses. We need a little bit more clarity on that, so, you know, what are the, you know, what does the council need to spend on technology? What kind of grants they, how much they spend on the meal? You know, major things, we don't want to get into where, how many boxes of pencils they're buying.
Right.
But at least a little bit more of a description.
Well, but the COA is a perfect example, the COA, the library, and Norris specifically, that none of those three are 100% funded from the general taxation.
Yeah.
Right? And so, like, you know, Norris tried to do it last year where they break that down, here's our, here's our real number that we need, here's how we're offsetting with the grants and all that, and what they're going towards, here's the bottom number that comes in. I think on the COA, the same thing needs to be happened, because it's always like, the comment is always, well, we're not even paying 100% of the director. Okay, but I don't see that on this sheet of paper. I'll see it when here.
Right.
But under our current setup, you don't see it there. You don't see the FRTA $28,000 grant that pays for 100% of the van drivers.
Right.
Right, so painting the full picture.
They operate those like separate departments rather than integrated into their program.
And then when you go to the voters and say, we need a little bit more, well, why do they need more money? They're always doing this, but here's their true budget.
Yeah.
You know?
No, I think that's true.
And then given the historical context, you know, some people actually see, you know, we have that now, but with the changes over the last five years, so that you can see like, oh, the postage increases 14.29%. Well, that's, that's crazy. I mean, oh, wait a minute, it's only $125, and that's because the stamp's been up for it. So it's easier for people to read and see.
What do you think about understaffing here, putting in FTE counts?
I'm in favor of that, I've put it right here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Down the bottom.
Yep.
So that you can see what changed.
Yeah, like on this one, administrative assistant, well, yeah, that's why it went up so much, because you got, you made a full-time position or two part-timers.
Yeah, right, and so many of ours are part-time, you know, they're not really full-time.
So that, that would be the budget book, and this is just the individual department. If you look at other budget books, there's a lot more work that goes into the general, you know, how much are we taking for revenue? Where does it go? Things like that.
Yeah, some of that would be, I mean, you know, it's going to be time-consuming, I guess that will be a challenge on it, but I did skim through both the Eastham, I think it was, and Stonem, whichever one you had up there. And there are pages of it that I thought would be really helpful for a resident.
Hell, yeah.
Who wanted to read it and understand, and it was like, well, where, where is this revenue from the state? Where are we getting from the state? And, you know, how do we employ it?
Oh, my goodness, it's so.
Oh, yeah, so I think there's, there's pieces of that book, I mean, the one that was like 270 pages, I think is a bit much, but I think there's chapters of it we might be able to modify and, you know, downsize a little bit to what we need to present that information, because I think it would just really help people understand it better.
And it also helps for the coming year, that year you're in, when we're applying for grants.
Correct.
So you can go right here, copy and paste and pull it out.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is a mountain to get this the first year and second year.
Yeah.
But by the third year, it's just update this number.
Correct, yeah.
If you start with everything you already produce, and what you want to have on hand to respond to an opportunity, then you build the motivation.
Yep.
To get on board with developing something like that.
And does this automatically become the annual report?
Yeah.
Well, that's what occurring to me.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
Good, very well, yeah.
So the other goal that I want to make sure we're tracking is that the budget that gets presented in the warrant for annual town meeting ought to be simplified and higher level, with this kind of thorough background available for people who want to dig into it.
So.
A smarter man suggests that than me.
There's, yes, and generally in favor of it, but I just want to be careful, there's pros and cons.
Oh, yeah.
So if you.
If we didn't do this.
If you, so right now, like, I'll use the police chief, since he's here, because he's all by line item.
Yeah.
He can't automatically take officer's wages and put it in overtime, because he's got to cover for somebody or vice versa. It's listed by line item, he's got to get approval. If you collapse all of it, if you collapse it, the department head is free to do whatever they want in between the two, regardless of who the department head is.
With town accountant approval.
Right.
Or you could, you could.
Break it down.
So even those that are bound up with union contracts and stuff like that, yeah, that's the flexibility, you remind me what the motivation was.
So I would say, yeah, but it's, it's wages and expenses.
Right.
So you can't take, you know, I didn't have to buy that 40,000 copier this year, I'm going to throw in wages.
You can't switch between the two and the other. So what would, yeah, what would have been those line items could be.
It's not a random blank check, it's just to get the annual town meeting voter to focus on the high level, and if they want to serve on the finance committee.
Right.
Have we got a seat for them?
Where, where I used to work, it was like, so you couldn't, you couldn't move, you couldn't budget shift between categories.
Yeah, correct.
But you could budget shift between line items, so even though the line items were listed, they were just indicative list, I mean, they were real, but I mean, they, they weren't.
Well, I just don't want to get to where police department, a million bucks.
No, no, I see, no, I agree, but what I was going to say is, what we did was say that, you know, if you wanted to shift between, I don't know, position A and position Z or whatever, it was like a 3%, anything over a 3% or 5% had to come to somebody else to take a look at. But there was a certain amount of flexibility that you could just shift between line items, you know, as the department head.
Yep.
But you couldn't do category to category within your budget. So I think there's a way to.
If we don't have good uniform information, every department head could cook the books and.
So we need a finance.
Yeah, so I mean, it can be a risk, too, so I mean, I think we have to build in the right.
Some sidebars, but something simpler for the average voter.
Yeah, for the department heads to be able to manage and not feel like they're constrained with every little nickel and dime in their budget. They have to manage it obviously, but not to, you know, say, Mother May I every time they need to shift something. Dan, you were going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to say something John mentioned earlier, you know, thinking about this and I think, you know, you have a lot of, you have a lot of great aspirations. And I say, I would try to aim for this over the next, maybe three years and first focusing on, I know that we have a lot of difficulty just getting our budgets together, right? Let's try to build our foundation of being able to adequately or appropriately get our budgets together and then how to present that information and things like that. So, you know, I'd say, don't, don't overextend yourself. Although I know you have great aspirations. That's all I want to mention.
Yeah. I think we could try to take a few steps toward this idea though, for this coming budget year. I think that would be great to do. I think that would be a good exercise.
I think the structure is coming from central.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we've been talking about kind of restructuring our budget process anyway, and we've never really, you know, grabbed onto something that made any sense. So this is at least giving us something to look at. So. Okay. So we'll hear more about this going forward. Yeah. So we don't need to discuss more of it tonight. Is that right?
Yeah, just the budget calendar. So.
Yes, sorry. Yes.
Depending on, you know, I'm going to, I'm trying to work on actual dates. So eventually get to this.
Nice.
But this was just a general order. We're a little bit behind already.
Surprise.
The chief's actually going to do zero-based budgeting for a department head meeting on Thursday. So he's going to go over that.
Good.
So we can check that off as well. But I would like, I would love to get the guidelines and kind of start having meetings with the FinCom just to get an overview of where we're going to be looking, start getting the revenue estimates early, just so if there are any emergencies or anything like that.
Right.
I know the representative of the Senator said that we're in a good financial state, but still there's a hiring freeze and they had NIC cuts, so.
Yeah, it really isn't the rainy day fund, just over taxation of the citizens that they chose to hold on to the money. And, you know, just saying, how'd you get the money to start with? It wasn't on lottery tickets.
Well, it was a lot of lottery tickets. But so Scott, I think one thing that if we can hold, I would really love to see us, you know, be able to have budget submissions in December, you know, before Christmas. If we can do that, that would put us so much further ahead than we usually are.
Yeah.
So I think whatever we can do to try to make this happen.
And then what are these two parallel, I mean, they're parallel. It's the budget calendar, but then the budget book. How, how much support, and by support, I mean labor, could you possibly get from the finance committee, you know, teaming up with them to work this out? I mean, it's some more bodies that, I mean, Reggie and I forget.
Doug and Becky are there.
Yeah, I mean, just their backgrounds are naturally fit for numbers and presentations.
Is that a five-person committee that we just lost one from?
Yes, we've only had.
So we've only got a quorum available right now if they all show up.
Right.
Okay. So we got to get some more people on there.
We only had four and we've lost one. So we're at three now. And then John, you're a, you're a delegate, but you're not a, not a voting member.
If you get down to two and it's within 60 days of the calendar year of our year ending, KP Law has given us a legal opinion that we can appoint select board members.
I see.
But only during that last 60-day emergency.
But back to your thing about having the finance committee with the expertise that is on there.
Yeah.
Help out with some of this. That might, yeah, if they will.
So again, we might need a joint FinCom meeting sometime soon too, as we think.
Anyone ever use Doodle?
Yeah.
Okay. So I might be sending out some doodle stuff just for the next six months. But if you can have, if you can like set a few dates just for joint meetings, it can be most efficient. Whether you want to do it over a couple nights or as a band-aid and do it over one long, one long night to do like budget presentations and things like that.
I liked when, when we, when we met, when we get into the budget, which months are we talking about? We're talking February, March?
Yes.
Yeah, February, March, where we met every Tuesday.
Yeah.
But on the off Tuesday, it was only budget material.
Only finance and budget stuff. Yeah. Only budget stuff.
Those as a starter, you know, we need more meetings, but at least then we can plug it into our calendars.
You know, and we really focused on the bigger ones.
Essentially a vacant finance committee? Or was it just for that cross-pollination of issues?
Well, I think it was, we couldn't, we didn't have the bandwidth to fit it in during our normal meetings at the time. So we broke that out.
Why did the select board have to carry such a heavy load?
Because even though our bylaws says the finance committee with the town ministry put it together, my four years on the select board hasn't happened yet.
The finance committee has, in my time, has, I don't think they've ever presented.
So how honest are we going to be in the budget book? Lack of volunteers.
Well, I think, I think we've got.
Any of our goals this year.
Yeah, but I think we've got some folks on the budget, on the finance committee that, you know, have got some, some good skills that could help us do this this time. But we haven't really had a very solid finance committee for a bit. And so that's been part of our problem.
I was just getting encouraged and we lost the chair.
I think sharing the calendar with them, showing them the path. I think all three of them are going to be on board and then.
Yes.
You know, can we find two more people to put on?
Yeah.
As good as the first three.
So I think, you know, the challenge, you know, too, is that when we, when we had these meetings, this off, off Tuesday meeting just for the budget, you know, we were really focusing on the bigger departments coming and presenting their budgets. And then there were a couple of others that came in. I know Lucy wanted to do hers and I forget somebody else that, you know, were not necessarily the bigger departments. But, you know, it really helped to, you know, just focus on that and not, not have anything else to talk about and not to have every department head come and do it to the finance committee and then come and tell it to the select board too, which is one thing that we did in one of my earlier years, which was a nightmare. So this, I think, you know, worked out pretty well to have a joint meeting and have a presentation of both boards at the same time. Good. All right. Okey-dokey. Are we set to move on?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, let's jump into, thank you, chief. Let's jump into revenue and expense report. And I think I'm going to maybe answer Carter Stevens' question, but maybe not. So we have expenses through June, the way I'm reading this report. And with that, that shows the general fund at 1.5 million overspent. But that's because revenues, I believe, only go through the end of May on this report. So I guess that's our challenge. We don't, still, we're still behind to get through fiscal '24 on this. So, but I know that's been worked on. So maybe since this report came out, we've got some other updates on the revenue reports, Scott.
It's also with the bridge funding as well. That kind of threw it off as well with the business grants report.
Oh.
So there's 1.5 million that we had to carry on the bridge. That wasn't accounted for.
Oh.
I know Jen is up to July and possibly August. I mean, we're meeting again on Thursday.
For the revenue?
For the revenue. Yep. So I do know she's done with the fiscal year. I just haven't sure how. Hopefully by October, it's already October.
October 1, so you're good.
So that was kind of the goal to get close to our, you know, 100% cut off.
Okay.
So I'm going to meet with Jen.
But you're pretty confident that July is done. So we should be seeing a new budget report. Excuse me for Bradley, that really puts FY '24 in perspective then more clearly, because this does show a lot of negatives or.
So fiscal year.
And you looked at the bottom line, just terrifying. I was looking, I think, beyond the annual fund to the multi-year funds, the special purpose accounts.
Yeah.
And I, although I'm warrant clerk and I see the one-to-one matching between invoice and special purpose, I don't know the restrictions on these funds and whether we have retired ones that are done and whether in a sense the balance that's showing on this big comprehensive list is reliable.
Yeah. And I think part of this doesn't really get complete until we're complete with the revenue report because so much of that is the carryover from last year that ties into this. So that's.
That was going to be my question. Is the starting budget numbers in the fiscal year '25 reports, which I don't think we have here?
This was just '24 that got sent out, I think, to us. So that's been some of the issue I know with certain of the committees. Planning Board for one, Concom, a few other CPA, you know, it's like, well, what, what was our carry into the fiscal year? And so because that thing has always been behind, it's been very tough for those groups to even manage that budget, those revolving funds they have or special revenue funds or whatever they may have.
Thank you.
But then I think a lot of, and anybody correct me, I think a lot of the revolving funds in particular, am I not right? Or am I thinking something else? Kind of thinking the revolving funds, but it may be some of the others where they basically are able, based on, or might be some of the special revenue funds, they can only spend the interest. They can't spend the principal, depending on however that is.
Yeah, which would have the restrictions for the purpose.
Right. So all that would explain it too. It's like, well, why does it look like you've got $40,000 in your budget and you're not spending it? Why are you coming to us for more money? But part of that is, is how these things were originally, you know, designated and set up. And maybe more of the.
Grant accounting forces some irregularities apparent on our books.
Cemetery funds, the alder funds.
Yeah. What about, yeah, what about the board of health? Don't they have a revolving fund too?
That's different. So revolving fund, they can spend up to the authorized amount of, amount they're authorized to spend, but they have to first collect their receipts.
Yeah. So right now they should be starting soon on using that revolving fund because we gave them a little bit of seed money.
To get through the first quarter.
To cover that contractor expense for covering.
That's the agent, the contractor agent.
For Charlie. And so that should be starting pretty soon now to start using this.
Because I'm hearing they have enough money. That's what I'm hearing.
Surprise, surprise. We keep hearing that a lot. But anyway, we'll see. I mean, they have to, you know.
They're charging the fees.
Yeah. So that's the idea. They need to charge the fees and make it work. Okay. So anyway, I don't know if there's other questions on the budget. So I think now, now that belaboring now, it's encouraging to know that we're probably through July on revenue. That's great. So let's assume that, at least on, we've got two more meetings this month. Let's assume that certainly by the end of this month, we have '24 tidied up. And, you know, our second meeting, our third meeting, rather, that we really have the, a good status of what our revenue and stuff is. Because then that one will be ready. And I really do want to, well, we'll get to it in a minute. But I do want us to sign, I don't know why our auditors want us to hold off, but I really do want us to sign our engagement letter for FY '24 as well.
There's no reason not to sign.
There's no reason not to sign it, as far as I can understand. So unless they.
Only if they're going to resend it. If they're going to resend it, that's why they don't want us to sign.
So as we leave the subject, I just would like to mark my follow-up question that at some point I'd like to know. And it doesn't need to be before the whole select board. It could be a finance committee or wherever. Just give me the notice that there's going to be an educational walkthrough of the special purpose accounts.
Yeah, hopefully that will be part of the budget process.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, if it becomes a line item on your calendar, I'm covered. Thank you.
The non-department funds that, you know, the grants and, you know, the debt and all that stuff should be a separate.
Yep.
Right. Exactly. It should be.
Good.
With a little bit of luck, it will be that. Okay. All right, next, ARPA financials. I know Bradley's gotten a whole lot closer with a few things on the school. And we're just trying to, some of the payroll things are not quite right yet. So Jen is running a payroll report on the names of the seven, eight teachers, I think, that are involved. Just to be sure that we've captured everything because they hadn't been very regular at identifying which project, ARPA project they were doing when they turned in their revenues or turned in the payroll slips last year. So I'm not going to say that we've got lots of money there, but we should have some money there. And we have, I think the first reimbursement has finally gone in. You've heard me talk about the Stormwater grant that Randall's been working on with tie-in bond, where we had to put out the full amount of the money and yet we're supposed to get $84,000 back from the state. The first reimbursement has gone into the state. Scott, I'm thinking it was $58,000. So we should be getting that back in. So I'm pretty sure we're going to have $58,000 for real coming back into our coffers. And then there's little dribs and drabs from.
We should have said that start with for the HR spot.
Well, I keep a surprise. Until we see it, I want to count it. And then a couple other smaller ones. We had put in a little bit of extra money just because we thought we might need it for the famous classification plan and a little bit for the green communities. So that's like another 6,000 that we're not going to use out of ARPA. So we're, you know, we're probably in the low 60s easily. I'm pretty thinking that we're good on. But, you know, we'll, we'll get more clear. So I'm still committed to getting between Jen and Scott and Bradley and I will get that nailed down to the.
Can I ask about the famous classification plan?
Yes. So Scott, you want to talk to that, about the bill on that one? Have we, where did we go in that?
We are still in negotiations.
Still in negotiations. All right. But definitely not, what was the, they wanted.
21,000.
21,000. Yeah.
But there's. They're sending us a new bill and I'm not sure if I'll accept that or not.
Okay.
So.
And what was the original contract that we didn't, contractual amount that we weren't?
I think it was 22.
21 or 22?
22.
Oh, they wanted all of it.
They wanted, yeah, no, they wanted full payment. Yeah.
Grumble, grumble.
That was a definite, no, they got that message, but I don't know how much they're going to be willing to come down on. So I think that's, that's probably necessary. And we may need, from what we're looking at, I think Scott, on the, from the public safety building committee, we may need maybe another 20,000 to cover some redesign work from the planning architects. So we might need that out of our.
Public safety.
For the public safety building committee. Right. So we've got some uses, but I want to get, certainly if not by next meeting, then definitely by the end of the month, to know exactly what we've got so that we can entertain any, any new awards, any new proposals in November to get this awarded. I definitely do not want to leave any money on the table. This all needs to get awarded to something viable, obviously. So we're getting there, but not quite ready to say this is exactly how much money we're going to have as surplus right now. Okay, jumping down. So land use planner, Scott, you already kind of gave us an update on that. We've got three entities. You guys are looking at interviewing, scoring and hopefully choosing.
They should all be, the initial one should be under 50,000. So we don't have to RFP.
Great. Good. All right. And College Highway Property Closing, again, you mentioned that already, that that's already a done deal. And so we actually do own the property now, which is.
Congratulations.
Amazing, amazing. Yeah.
Is there going to be a press release sending that? I can't remember what.
We have.
Would the Boils want a press release?
The Boils family does not want a press release. They did not want a lot of publicity. But to the extent that the Gazette or the Reminder approach us, and I think we ought to talk about the closing of the property, that's a worthy news article. And I think we would mention certainly the gift in there. That's fine. They just didn't want special, special attention. That was their mission.
Now that we own it, did we notify our insurance?
We did. We don't have to adjust it because it's just land, no structures.
So we're self-insured for general liability with all the tour, guided tours and so forth, staying over there?
And the fact that I almost lost my life in that property because of the.
Two in a row, I nearly lost.
Why?
George.
What happened?
Oh, I told you this because I got caught.
And first George went down when they had him out there and then.
I got caught in the vines and that wasn't a problem.
And it was catching around your ankles.
It wasn't the vines as much as the fact that it was completely surrounded by, like, with poison ivy. I couldn't reach down to try to get my boot out because I was going to get the poison ivy.
It's the worst, the worst, right, Molly?
Yes.
So we're self-insured for general liability?
I do need a little.
Those listed.
Yeah. Well, we actually, I mean, we have an ask into the.
Yes.
Recent previous owner to see if he might mow it one more time.
We said it's in the mail, so.
I know.
Well, the recent previous owner made a big thing about all the equipment he's got.
He's got the equipment. So we'll see if he's going to be willing to do that.
I got a brush, I can drive down.
That's the liability. I'm worried.
Watch out. Okay. Next one up, a letter of support for PVPC and the HUD Pro Housing Grant.
I move that we approve the letter of support. That's harmless.
Yeah, so this is.
Potentially beneficial.
Right. So this is, PVPC is basically trying to, blah, 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 applying for a HUD Pro Housing Grant. So it focuses and provides PVPC with five years of funding to update regional land use and housing plans and support municipalities in completing state-approved housing production plans and other things. So they're asking if we would sign on as a municipality. So I need a motion to do that.
Got one in a second.
In a second? Okay. Any discussion?
When do they get the money?
Ba-da, ba-da, ba-da. They need the letter before the 10th. So if we can get that done, I don't think they say when the money was.
Is this discretionary or all but certainty?
It says they are applying for head pro housing, HUD Pro Housing Grant. So I, I think it's an application process. I don't know.
I have no more questions.
When that might.
Menehanna.
Come due. But so.
This is the first day of the new fiscal year.
So all those in favor of approving the signing of the letter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Very good. We will get that done and into them. Any other necessary business that can't wait until the October 15th regular meeting?
Have all the boards signed off on the status of 177, 178 Brick Garrett Road? Notice of, well, it's with a receiver and whether the receiver has completed the cleanup.
I don't know about that. I don't know who signed off Brick Garrett.
Our board of health agent or no, contractor has been working with.
It's been pretty cleaned up down. When I drove by, it's pretty cleaned up.
The cleanup is done, I think.
Cleanup's done, but I.
I wonder if you get my response. Charlie said, what do you think? And I was driving dog walk, daily dog walk details. So I pulled in and took a bunch of pictures. And they have taken an unbelievable crap load.
Yeah, no, there's been a ton of stuff.
But what's left is the filthy fragments of all different kinds of porcelain, plastic, metal that is in the soil that needs a different approach to get it out of there. I said something like a stone rake that landscapers use.
Sure, sure.
And then at the perimeter, you know, they pulled what they could with a grappler, but some of the stuff nearly got pushed. And I think the conservation agent ought to take a look that, from a conservation perspective, they're happy with the boundary condition. But then to stabilize this site, and I don't know on whose dime, now that it's raw dirt, it's a weed magnet. And if it's not stabilized with a relatively inexpensive conservation mix and normal care and control, if we don't do it this fall, by springtime, the only thing will be weeds out of our ability to control. So it'll become a source for this kind of problem.
It might be an issue for Concom to take up. You guys are meeting sometime soon.
And the other way the security is with boulders on the front edge. Otherwise it will simply get more mattresses.
Yeah, no, I, nothing has come before us. I think it's all been board of health.
And sign.
Whomever. Yeah.
I think Charlie was looking specifically to certain committees for their sign-off.
I don't think we've heard that though, outside of what you've heard.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyway, okay. Old business, hazard mitigation plan update. Scott, you guys had a meeting?
We had a meeting and then we're hoping to do a presentation for the select board with, which is also going to be a public meeting as well. Hopefully we'll have microphones by then. Either October 29th or November 15th. I don't know if there's a preference that we would like to have it on.
Like November 15th, if they can fulfill special requests.
Okay.
I have a song request. I understand that they can model some of the hazards such as the failure of the dam on an oil system. Presumably they can also model high-impact storms. And I don't know what degree of resolution, but I would request that they turn the model up until it breaks and look at the extreme conditions because 20 inches of rain is certainly an extreme condition. And I don't know, maybe the model really doesn't understand anything more than three to five inches in an event. But I would truly like to see what happens as the model breaks. Because that's what happened in North Carolina. It's a terrible loss of infrastructure and so much that we need to look at that. But the failure of the dam, however improbable that is, it is one measurable impact.
And then you all had the guy from Tech Carmody here at the meeting, did you not?
Yeah, we had Hoyt Water Works.
We're told that they did some modeling of that at some point.
Basically, yeah, basically if the dam was to break, the cause of, that would be the least of our concerns because it'd be a major earthquake, terrorist attack, plane landing directly into the dam.
20 inches of rain.
20 inches of rain. But they actually, I don't want to go into the details because I'll not get correct with them. But they do monitor it based on what's coming up in the, in the couple of weeks of weather.
Aye.
So that they.
It's a great science of dam management. Yes. I have a lot of faith in that.
I'd like to hear the presentation. I won't be here on October 29th. So if it's possible to do.
You can do the 15th. Try for that or whatever the middle. Yeah, because I think too, and you know, you can have it certainly downstairs and invite the public in or have it on a Zoom or something. So if people had questions or, or what we'd want to do, I guess would have the, to me, I would want to have like the draft report up on the website. And if there's a way for, for people to write in questions, you know, we give them a week or something. If they, they read it, they have a question, they can just jot in a question somehow and some. If they, they read it and they have a question, they can just jot in a question somehow on a, some chat thing or something, uh, so that we do get some community feedback if there is any, um, I think that would be good.
This underlist of pet peeves, you know, like my personal pothole that I want to have addressed. Really, I was absolutely flabbergasted during one of these extreme thunderstorms that only lasts a half an hour. Um, Chief Illensworth was driving back from North Dakota and I got him on the phone, I said, "Chief, you gotta stop all the traffic on Route ten." Because I turned around because the water was that deep at the river. And when the river had come out of its bank, it's all water coming off of Riverside or Glendale, whichever it is, comes shooting down the hill, and there's a low spot just south of the bridge. I'm not talking about Lyman's Mill, I'm talking about up by our.
Up by Booz's up there, yeah.
And, uh, six, eight, ten inches deep there just because of the volume of runoff, not the backing up of the river. Um, if you hit that at full speed and there was no indication that there was a hazard there, you'd not have a good day.
For sure.
So that's my personal pothole, it actually happened and it was just a, a bad thunderstorm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Stormwater Enterprise Fund, Scott.
Oh, yeah, um, we signed the contract with tie-in bond, um, and that's where we are right now, there's no other.
Right, okay.
So, so the price, they.
They came down.
Okay.
So we got it within our, I think we got it within our ARPA money that we had allocated, yeah. So that's to determine how we can set up a, a Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
Right.
Uh, and not have to budget it separately every time, it's thirty thousand dollars a year or whatever it is.
Okay.
So in code, that's how to create a separate standalone tax that we pass on to collect money.
It will be. It will be. Oh, yeah.
November fifteenth is a Friday night, that's what you intended?
Yeah, I might have wrong.
Sometime in that, that week.
October fifteenth or November fifteenth?
November.
It might be, okay, I thought you said October twenty-ninth.
Uh, yeah, that was one of the questions.
Cindy's not gonna be here a couple others, so go for the.
But I'm really not the most important.
But we'd have our next.
Oh, November twelfth, I'm sorry.
November twelfth, okay, that's a Tuesday, okay, great.
All right, um, after that, Scott, Manhattan Meadows Bridge update, so this is the, um, the bridge down at the Manhattan Meadows Sanctuary. Any update on that one?
Um, no update, they're doing the engineering right now, so hopefully it should be very close to it, so.
Who's doing the engineering right now? The company that's gonna put it in?
Oh, I did build the bridge, yeah.
So I'm gonna give you my two cents with, I've spent some time in Vermont this year and they had a ton of water up in Vermont, as you might have known, a lot of rain up there. I was amazed at the bridges that came in on trucks, like we talked, like prefab bridges, and they were put in, I don't know, about two and a half million dollars or two and a quarter million dollars, whatever it is. Just kinda wonder about that quote, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, we're, we went back to the actual manufacturer of the bridge and they're the ones working on doing something, so.
The bridge part's an easy part.
No, I know it's the bridge, I'm talking about the, yeah, they did it, they put in the bridge.
Yeah.
Well, Vermonters.
Anyway, okay, so that's, that's ongoing, we're hoping we'll get some updates on that in the next couple of weeks and see where that goes. Cause that's too, that's part of that Man, uh, Mass Trails Grant that will expire, so we wanna try to get that used if we possibly can and get that done with Concom. Uh, capital asset planning, uh, we're working on that a little bit, um, through the Cost efficiencies Committee and, um, taking a look at, uh, especially the fire, police, water, highway, um, ten-year, five-year at least, but ten-year capital plans that they currently have, and we're gonna take a look and see how they, um, sync up with assessors and accountant in terms of our actual vehicle inventory and other equipment inventory, to make sure it's all correct and that we're paying what we should be paying for insurance on the right things and things that have been disposed of or need to be disposed of.
Right, using that list to anticipate future purchase needs and that.
That too.
But along with that, we had talked when we did the joint walkthrough at Norris.
Yes.
About doing what Scott called an envelope study.
Correct, yeah.
Of at least Norris and then, and then that's where it started, and they said, can we incorporate all the town buildings? So I, I think that would be part of the capital asset too, um, at least maybe keep it on the forefront for when we do the budget.
What do we actually call it, an envelope study?
Yeah, structural.
Structural envelope study?
Yeah.
Okay, good point, yeah, I forgot about that, okay.
How are we throwing about Norris?
Um, I can't do the walkthrough, give me credit, I can't do the walkthrough.
It's not seventy-six.
Chris's, Chris's biggest takeaway from, uh, it's gonna be, it was nineteen fifty-two.
Yeah.
No.
The first section.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Chris, Chris's talk, walk away from when we got that, she goes, "I haven't been back here since I graduated when I was in sixth grade." Pretty much, it is still the same.
Yeah.
My point exactly.
Anyway, surplus equipment disposal, Judy's working on that, we're getting, uh, a couple of things up, she's trying, and they were with this website, the municipal auction site.
Yeah, so if anyone's interested in a hundred, twelve-year-old, fifteen-inch community, uh, computer monitors, that's where you wanna go.
Exactly, so we're gonna slowly get those advertised and, I think they have to be advertised for a couple of weeks or two, three weeks or something, I'm not sure we're gonna get any bids on any of this stuff and we'll just have to dispose of it elsewhere.
Pay a lot, we have to pay.
But slowly we will, slowly we will get them officially advertised so that we can officially dispose of them and clear out the basement plus other storage areas that other people have been hiding all their equipment in, sort of tripping over it over time. Uh, twenty-three status on the audit, how are we doing, they came in and did their onsite?
Yep, they did their onsite last week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and, um, they have some follow-up questions that we're trying to put together, IT issues, um, law, lawsuits, um, legal, the letter from our county council, there's no pending lawsuits, things like that, so we're slowly getting that stuff to them.
Okay, all right.
But our historic society stuff, so it's.
I'm sorry. Um, and then green energy approval.
So they've received the, um, they received the, the.
Done payment or?
The payment, yeah, for the materials, so we're in their pipeline to get it scheduled.
Okay, so that's the installation again for the improved lighting over at the library, stuff here, police station, and then the.
The master control board.
The controller boards or something up at, up at the school, right? So that grant will be finally underway, so that's, that's good news, you know, to get that going. Um, anything new on East Street section or anything, I don't think there's anything there? Yeah, and a couple of things Scott and I have been talking about, I'm just, we, we were working on getting, um, the cement pad up in front of the, uh, steps done. Uh, we had a quote, but apparently they didn't use prevailing wage, so we gotta go back and check that back again. Uh, so a couple of things like that are not on the list, but there's some hanging issues we're still working on, so. With that, uh, Stephen, I'll let you read the warrants, go for it.
Favorite part of every meeting. All right, I would like to share with you all the warrants that have been signed since I last reported. Um, they are P twenty-five dash six, the amount of three hundred five thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Next warrant, W twenty-five dash seven, the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Next warrant, W twenty-five dash seven A, the amount is one million, four hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
And I might know that that's probably our Hampshire Regional Assessment payment.
It is.
Okay.
PD twenty-five dash eight, the amount is twenty, uh, fifty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars and eight cents. PD twenty-five dash eight A, two hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents, over. W twenty-five dash nine, the amount forty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents. W twenty-five dash ten, the amount is fifty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-one cents. P twenty-five dash ten, the amount is three hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. W twenty-five dash eleven, the amount is two million, four hundred fourteen thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. PD twenty-five dash twelve, the amount fifty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. PD twenty-five dash twelve A, the amount is two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Respectfully submitted, your warrant called.
All right, very good.
Throws you off when that comes out there.
So, exactly. So all the payroll and all the vendor warrants and payroll deductions, uh, so thanks Stephen for doing that.
Yep.
Uh, we have a, a couple of personnel change forms, I'm gonna suggest we take the three resignations as a group and the new hires as a group, so if somebody would like to.
Motion to accept the following resignations, all PCFs, Deborah Rodway, resignation interim COA director, effective August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Dennis Cynical, Wire Department, Water Technician, resignation effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Eric Loico, Police Department, Part-Time Police Officer, resignation effective September fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, your motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve PCFs, uh, for the following folks.
Dan Cerro.
Dan Cerro, Kevin, or Kevin Dan Cerro, Fire Department, new hire firefighter slash EMT, basic, non-benefited, on-call as needed, eighteen dollars, forty-two cents per hour, and Thomas Kennedy, Accounting Assistant Accountant, new hire, part-time, non-benefited, grade three, step twelve, twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cents an hour.
Second.
Okay, second by Dan, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, uh, and just a question, um, when would Thomas start to work with Bradley, is he ready to go or?
Yeah, he's ready, he's ready to go, he's just waiting for this vote, so.
Okay, great, that'd be nice to have that position filled, very good.
Hire the retired.
Good, okay, and our next select board meetings are the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
Retirement.
Uh, and that's what we got going, and, uh.
That's good going, I move we adjourn.
I think there's nothing else?
We adjourn and go to executive session.
And it's not on the agenda.
Did I read it wrong?
Oh, uh, that'll be next, but we could delay the candidate's one.
Oh, oh, okay. Do you can I adjourn?
I thought that's.
Well, it was on the original, no, this is revised when it came out, yeah.
That was one because.
That's how we end every meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're going to adjourn, so I had a motion to adjourn, Scott's second.
Negative.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are adjourned at, um, what time is it?
Somebody tell me, I can't see the clock. Eight fifty, uh, eight, no, I'm sorry, nine?
No.
No, it's eight forty-four.
Eight forty-four, thank you, eight forty-four, we are adjourned, thank you.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.